We'll call this meeting to order. Oh, first thing I need to ask everyone to please turn off their volume. Okay. All right, we'll call this meeting to order at seven oh four and forty-five seconds. There we go. Where's Julie? Can you call the role, please? Here?
John?
Here?
Stephanie? Here? And? Here? Alex?
Here.
Justin?
Here.
Jen?
Here.
I think Jen is attending online.
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah.
All right, so we have all twelve. Then we have a quorum.
Greg?
I want to say one thing, if anybody has logged on tonight to see, we were going to invite our members of the football team and their coach. That had to be postponed to January because we had people, students who couldn't be here because there was something else. There's a basketball scrimmage or something, so if you signed up for that tonight, sorry, it's come back in January, January ninth is our next meeting. Okay, in the meantime, we're going to adjourn briefly and go into the instrumental holiday music presentation by this Chappagh Valley School Band. That's in the in the auditorium.
Okay, we will come back and order say.
Eighteen minutes past seven.
But I think so. Well, I don't know unless you get enough support.
At this point, I'll ask if there are. Well, look, let me thank Mark and the band for an excellent job. He really enjoyed that, and I wish we could have had more numbers. Public comment on agenda items. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on any matter on tonight's agenda?
Yes, I would.
Please use the hand raise feature so I can find you. Or if you if you're on camera, raise your hand. All right. Doug, your name is all run together, so I can't figure. I can't see it.
Yeah, it's I didn't test my audio. Can you hear me all right, sir?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, my that's my email address. It's Doug Delisle, D E L I S L E.
Okay.
Live at one eighty-nine Blueberry Hill Road in Bridgewater.
Okay.
Um, I just had a brief comment about what I heard about recently here tonight. I attended a board to have a quick. I'm going to read from it's not the best way. I'd rather prefer to speak on my feet. However, I wrote down a couple of things here, so sorry for that. I attended a board event meeting a few years ago, and a question was directed to the region's attorney. If there was a legal basis to squelch what was called obstruction at the time. The bemused look on his face said more to me than his response, which I would paraphrase as people are entitled to their opinions. I am asking the board comprised of dedicated friends and neighbors to be circumspect. If there is a vote to censure paying close attention to the appropriateness of the grounds. Would a vote serve to purify future discourse or pollute it? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other member of the public who has a comment on anything on tonight's agenda? I don't see any hand raises or anyone waving in their their picture frame. So I think we've I think we've exhausted the comment. We'll now move on. Is there any item on the consent agenda? There are minutes of the meeting of the Board of Education of November twenty-eight and then October twenty-four. Is there anything anyone would like to take off the consent agenda for discussion and adoption? John, yes?
Yes, I'm going to have to object to the minutes as noted for October twenty-fourth.
Well, why don't we take those off of the? Oh, gosh. The question is, do we still have them in here? We'll take those off and discuss them. Here they are. Yeah, the question was what I did with them, not whether we got them. John, you have an issue with the agenda. You want to remind us again what your what your objection is? Is this the same thing you handed out last time?
No.
What's this?
So. I object to item J. The executive session changed the public session minutes for October twenty-fourth B O E meeting for the following reasons. It does not fully reflect reflect what occurred. The narrative is only one sided. It implies that I claim to represent the board, which I did not. I am being deprived of a forced fair statement of facts. And my statements made on October twenty-fourth erroneously concludes that my letter to voices contained inaccurate information. Furthermore, I have obtained copies of the recording secretary's notebook. It is obvious that additional commentary was added to the recording secretary's original handwritten notes. Thus, undo editing and embellishing the minutes after the minutes have been compiled. There is the matter of note to Debbie. If you could, if you look through it there on top, on the first page of the recording secretary's notes, there was something added on the top right hand corner. That was clearly added sometime after the October twenty-fourth session ended. The original handwritten minutes contain statements that were either not included or edited in order to change their meaning and provide a misleading public record. The official minutes of October twenty-fourth public session state in the second paragraph that Mr. Kaba provided details on the recent letter to the editor written by Mr. Boniudo published in the voices on October twelfth, twenty twenty-two that contained inaccurate information. Nowhere in the hour and five minute video or the transcript of that recording is this statement made or provided. The official published minutes should be a fair and accurate synopsis of board discussion and what actually occurred on the October twenty-fourth B O E meeting regarding the executive public session. Performance of a board member. Why is it that the minutes do not reflect my legitimate responses to the charges? So. What happened was things that never occurred made it on to the minutes and things that did occur were not added to the minutes. My objections are for the record and supposed supported by the transcript.
Well. The only thing I can say is that minutes are not a transcript of a proceeding. The minutes are only required to reflect what was what were the topics that were discussed and whether any action was taken. They are not to transcribe, you know, what someone does. As far as the modifications of those minutes, they were all done by the secretary for the superintendent without any input, as far as I can tell from any other board member, certainly not from me. So. If you have questions about why Debbie changed the minutes, you can ask her.
Well, if 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 those minutes were altered based on something that never occurred, why should they be in the official recording of the minutes?
Because, John, they're not a transcript, and if she took things out that were in there, it's because they didn't belong in the minutes. I assume that's what she did. She did them. She did them without supervision. And 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 the minutes, as stated, are in the usual form that our minutes are in. You might want to make a the minute have the minutes reflect a a back and forth conversation, but they're not required to, nor nor should they.
I'm requesting that that.
If you want to make a change to the minutes, propose it, and we'll vote on it.
I propose to delete Mr. Kaba also provided details on on the recent letter to the editor written by Mr. Boniudo. That simply did not happen on the October twenty-fourth meeting in the voices on October twelve, twenty twenty-two that contain inaccurate information. You never made those statements. So. Those have to be removed, and I would like some of my defense added to the minutes.
Well, the only thing I can do is we'll have to listen to the transcript. We're going to have to put these leave these on. We'll take them off the consent agenda and have them arrive at a future meeting. We're going to have to listen to the transcript of the hearing. If you think there's something in here that doesn't belong because it wasn't discussed, then we'll we'll definitely review the transcript and not the transcript, we'll review the the video of the meeting, and if it's wrongly in here, it'll be removed.
Okay, Greg.
I'm sorry, Jen, I'm.
Can you hear me? It's fine. I have my frog voice on. Um, I guess the question that I have is is that if John's concern is that it's hearsay based on the minutes that were written, and then he wants his input on what he thinks the minute should be, that maybe just for this instance, we should use the transcript as the as the actual minutes so that we're not being led by one or the other. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Jennifer. I I do have a copy of that transcript that I didn't get to you because you didn't attend the last meeting, so.
So I just I think because I think it could be tricky to have John's input and then other input. I I just think at this point, just to keep things very clean and clear, we should just use the transcript for the minutes at for just that meeting. Personally. Because otherwise, it's it's the interpretation is going to be skewed one way or the other regardless.
So, Jen, I'm sorry, what I.
Can we just use transcript as the minutes for that twenty-fourth meeting?
Yeah.
I I just feel like at this point.
Is that the idea?
I I mean, is that reasonable to use the transcript as the minutes for that particular meeting?
It's not reasonable to use them as minutes. They're not minutes. They're not effective.
I I understand, but otherwise we're spending time and energy trying to come up with a surmise of the meeting and it and we're just it's not worth it to to try to come up with one one version or the other. And if it's recorded, which we all can see recorded on YouTube, it's not like we all can hop on and see what was said. Which is a plus.
Look, I mean, the the minutes that are put forth, I mean, the only thing that so far I've heard that John has issue with on these minutes, other than they don't contain enough, he would rather seem a more inclusive summary are that there was a there was no discussion of he says that there was no discussion on the details of the of the letter to the editor. I don't remember. It's the twenty-fourth of October. I've had a lot.
Right, but I think if we use the transcript from from the from the meeting, then we all will know what was exactly said because in reality, what those minutes may reflect is not necessarily what we're discussing later on in the meeting anyway. So if we have it, we already have the video. So using the transcript as our minutes for that one particular meeting could just help us to move on.
Well, we we can't use the transcript because the transcript doesn't follow the the proper form of minutes. Look, we're just going to not address this issue tonight. We'll come back and deal with it later. I'm going to go listen to it. Going to go listen to the thing on the meeting. I'll discuss it with counsel as to what should properly be in a set of minutes and what should not be in a set of minutes. Because these minutes are the written. We they're not a transcript of the meeting. There are there are written a summary of the items that were taken dealt with in the meeting, and I I think I think attaching the transcript to it or using a transcript in place of it is not a proper not a proper set of minutes, and I don't if counsel thinks it's fine, then I have no issue with it, but.
Can I ask one more question then, Greg?
Yeah.
How is it that something that did not occur found its way to the menace? But something that did occur is excluded.
John, I didn't prepare the minutes. I didn't have input on the minutes. I didn't talk about the minutes with anyone, so I don't know. I honestly don't know. I obviously the first pass through this. These things that were flagged by by the people that prepared them and then worked on them. I'll go listen. I'll go back and listen. If there's something in here that that's not in the meeting, then it should be removed. If there's something that that is in the meeting, that's fine, but I'm not going to do a summary that we that that everybody's happy with of everything that was discussed. That that's just not a proper thing for a set of minutes. Uh, you know, in in terms of that.
I recommend talking to counsel about using the transcript.
Council believes properly contain what they need to contain under the law. And and that's what and that's what we'll do. I will look at the materials that you've submitted as well and we're and see what the best approach is, taking into consideration Jen's idea. Anything further? All right. Since there's no objection to the minutes of November twenty-eight, I know and no expressed purpose to remove them from the the consent agenda, only the minutes of November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two shall be adopted. Without objection. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Updates on COVID nineteen. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I have a a public comment. Don't be. We're going to circle back to public comment. I have a public comment from someone that couldn't speak on the computer but wanted to record their their view, so I'm going to read it. It says on it says on this is from Jessica Cassini of Roxbury, Connecticut. Says, unfortunately, I am not in a place that will allow me to speak, but I still wish to have my voice heard. John B. is an elected B O E member and is such should be permitted to continue his term without censure unless there is an election to indicate the region once otherwise. Respectfully, Jessica Cassini of Roxbury, Connecticut. I don't know whether there's an understanding of what censure involves, but it does not remove someone from their office. They continue to serve their term. So I'm not quite sure what 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 she intended, but you've now heard it. So. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak, member of the public that we've missed or somehow couldn't? If if you're in a position where you can't get to you can't speak and be heard, then please and you can't raise your hand or whatever, then please. I suppose you could submit it on the chat, but I'd like to move off of that item on the agenda, so. I see no one else with a using the hand raise feature, and I see no one else that appears to be seeking to speak. All right, so we're going to go back to the agenda. We're going to move on to item E, which is updates on COVID nineteen. And for that, I will turn it over to our new superintendent of schools, Mark Goslin.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So COVID numbers. This reflects the date range spanning November seventeenth through November the thirtieth. And I'll run down each school with the number of staff and students and the number of COVID cases in each in each school. So for Booth Free School, we have zero staff and zero students. Burnham School, one staff, one student. Chapag Valley School, one staff, one student. Washington Primary School, two staff, two students. So if you're keeping score at home, that brings us to a total of four staff and four students district wise. Again, that's from eleven seventeen through eleven thirty. The current period from December first till today, we have one staff member at Chappagh Valley as our only case in the entire district. I would also encourage the the board to consider potentially removing these updates of COVID numbers from the the public agendas moving forward. Maybe it's something we can still communicate in superintendent's weekly update to the to the board, but where the case numbers are so low and it looks unlikely that in the foreseeable future, any action would have to be taken like those we did in some of those historical moves. It seems that probably something that we don't need to continue to go through a week after or every other week going through and going to the numbers if, you know, they're so small, we're not going to do too much about it anyway at this point.
Okay, so this will be the last regularly scheduled superintendent's report on COVID nineteen, unless anyone has an objection and wishes to have this remain a part of our meeting. You'll receive the information in a different form and can digest it, and if there's obviously a big spike or some problem, you'll be brought back to us. This is good news. Very good news. Okay. We'll move on to reports and recognition. I had the privilege of attending the sale that the agri-science program conducted of holiday wreaths and trees and poinsettias and other things on an ornaments tree, the tree ornament of the year with peppermint patty on it on Saturday. It was absolutely a terrific event. This was really well done. The kids, I I saw a greenhouse full of poinsettias. There were a lot of trees. There were a lot of wreaths that the students made and put together, and there were people, a fair number of people attending it, and I was there in the early morning. I think Pete, you were there, too. And I don't know whether anyone else went later, but I think it was I think it was a really tremendous event, and it was exciting to see this level from our ag science program. I think it was it was terrific. And I really I really enjoyed that. I also wanted to mention that I also had the privilege of nearly freezing to death at the championship game for the football team, the Northwest United that we participate in. It was a I knew I was in trouble when I got there and I didn't have a blanket. And it was thirty-two degrees when I arrived at the field, but I did manage to sit through the game and spending halftime in my car trying to warm myself up. But I got to tell you, they 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 played their hearts out. It was really a tremendous event. You know, they went undefeated during the season. They did not win their their playoff game. But we're going to have we're going to have them in because it's the first time we've had this team do anything, and they did go undefeated, so we're going to have them in to to see you at the next meeting. So I'll I'll save my other comments that I had on this for that. But it really was exciting to to see to be at that game, and and it was even more exciting to get home in one piece. It was really cold, but boy, did they play. It was tremendous. Obviously, I want to very importantly, welcome Mark. Doctor Mark Goslin to our 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 board as our new superintendent. Today is his first day. He got to be up at four in the morning to call the two hour delay. It's always nice to start in the winter. But I did see that text just minutes after four A M. indicating what had happened. So Mark's off to a great start. I understand it was a good day, and that's about all I have to say. So it's your turn.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So before we get to some of the bulleted items or lettered items, I guess, in the agenda, I would just like to take a moment just to thank you first and foremost. It was a wonderful first day. You know, I did not mind at all getting up at four o'clock and making the call. And it was a wonderful day in the district, and I'm really excited, you know, to be here. The the day flew by, you know, and I got to cap it off my very first day with a a school board meeting, which, you know, of course, is a rare treat. So I was really excited, you know, to kind of do the whole superintendent superintendent gamut today. But before I do those items around the agenda, just want to share a couple of updates from around the district. There's so many exciting things that are going on. So we'll start with some of the elementary schools. During the last two weeks, all three elementaries had their first lockdown drills of the year, which obviously safety is paramount concern to us, so we're practicing those procedures and they went swimmingly. So we're going to continue to do that as the year goes on, but we're off and running in terms of school safety. And last week, the three elementary schools all wore pajamas along with students across the state to support a statewide effort to fight childhood cancer that was coordinated by the Connecticut Children's Hospital. Booth raised a hundred and sixty dollars from the effort. Burnham raised a hundred and eighty-five dollars for the effort, and Washington collected four hundred and twenty-six dollars for the efforts. So collectively, our elementary schools raised seven hundred and seventy-one dollars to help support the fight against childhood cancer. So great job for all those families last week. On Friday and Saturday nights of December second and third, the booth and Burnham choruses both had a chance to perform at their town's tree laying events. Students sang holiday songs for families and community members. On Friday, the ninth, the Washington primary chorus students sang holiday songs and shared an original song for the community in front of Brian Memorial Town Hall in Washington. And then we have a slew of events going on around the holiday season, but next week, the elementary schools are participating in cultures around the world. And as such, each school is doing a little bit of a unique dive into a culture to learn more about folks who are different than ourselves. And so on December nineteenth, Burnham is studying Hanukkah. On December twenty-first, Booth will be studying the Wali, and Washington Primary will study Mexico, its traditions, cultures, and holidays. Washington is currently doing a food drive for the Washington Food Bank, and the student council visited the Washington Warren Food Pantry to learn how food is gathered and disseminated and what items they are in most need of at this particular time of the year. They share their experience with the whole school and encourage donations to be submitted up and through December the thirteenth. All three elementary schools were treated to a concert today from Jane Chung, who is a mother of a former student who played the violin and viola for the students. And all elementary schools will be participating in PEP, which stands for Personalized Enrichment Program, that's open to students in grades three through five. It will run two times per month, beginning in December and ending in April, and will be held at at Booth. And the PEP program is really a unique program to help encourage thinking skills in students, creative thinking and problem solving in a way that's fun and and certainly age appropriate for those students in in grades three through five. So we're excited about that. Over at Chappagh Valley, not to be outdone, a number of events to also share. Last Tuesday, high school students had their holiday concert with band and chorus performing, and Thursday, the middle school students had their holiday concert. And the audiences were very enthusiastic, and it was reported that they were back to nearly their pre-COVID sizes. So again, good news for the school community that things are starting to get back to our our pre-COVID days. Also, last Thursday, students at Chappagh held the Holiday Bazaar. Again, that was very well attended. So there's a lot of energy enthusiasm about reconnecting, I think, to some of those things that bring a sense of community to the school. As Mr. Cava talked about, the. As Mr. Cava talked about, the holiday sale is held by the Ag Science Program. And from what we hear, it was a great success over at the Garden Center, where students sold trees, cemetery boxes, wreaths, hot cocoa, poinsettias and other baked goods. Last Tuesday, the National Honor Society inducted twenty-five new members. So congratulations to those students who were recently inducted into the National Honor Society. And Thursday night of this week, this is a reminder that we will be having an eighth grade parent student night here at Chapag with a tour and information for eighth grade families considering joining us for their secondary school experience. Chapag Cares is a community-wide event that will be taking place on December the nineteenth. And they've been working through the advisories to share lessons with, with students and engage in projects to help give back to the community. And so that's a really exciting program that's being held here in the school. And then next week is a spirit week and we have theme days. Here at Chapag that will include ugly sweater contests, twin days, color wars and a pajama day. Recently, the French Club also held a spaghetti dinner, which I guess they had a, a very good turnout as well. We have lots of sporting events that are, are ongoing, so please come out and support. We have basketball, wrestling, ice hockey, all competing this week and next week and through the, the holiday recess as well. So, you know, come out and support the Spartan athletes. And last but not least, the Leo Club here is also holding a coat drive to provide coats to families who critically need the winter gear during this time of the year. Particularly this week, it's getting very cold. So you can certainly stop by the school and drop off new or used winter gear in the drop box in the lobby. And so that concludes the updates and then we'll just quickly circle back to some of the items here that are listed. So for personnel, we'd like to share the appointments of Malcolm Loman as the school nurse at Burnham School. I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Loman during one of my tours and everyone raved about the work that he's been doing at the school. So we're really excited to have him joining the staff. And I think he's done a nice job already hitting that, that the ground running at that school and doing a nice job supporting students and staff there. Also would like to share the resignation of long-term agri-science teacher, substitute teacher here at Chapag Valley School, Matthew Sniffen, at an effective date of December the second. And also the transfer of Brienne Leslie. She was formerly working as an ed assistant at Burnham School. And now she'll be working as a full-time paraprofessional over at Burnham. Also, I'd like to share a notification of an upcoming field trip of Spanish students to El Museo del Barrio in Museum in New York City on January the sixth, twenty twenty-three, to learn about the experiences of Spanish immigrants as they arrived in New York City and navigated that experience. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Just want to make a comment. I, I was going over to a PTA parents' meeting and met
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to Treasurers Report. John, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. It's no secret, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four preliminary budget discussions are well underway. Projections could run as high as ten to twelve percent over the current budget. Drivers for increases are facilities budget increases almost thirty-five percent. Necessary periodic repairs, fuel and electric cost increases, heating oil and propane, and especially the diesel fuel costs for the buses. And the fact that COVID grants monies are ending. Pupil services and special needs, student costs have escalated. Extra literacy staff is necessary. Increased requirements for nursing and custodial departments. Debt servicing increased due to the higher interest rates on our recent bond and band financing. Wage increases for all staff throughout the bargaining units. Benefit costs have significantly risen. New smart boards to replace all the older versions at Chapag. And our TV studio is hoping to get an upgrade and a refurbishment. I am certain that there is a litany of other things that I have failed to mention, so. The budget is gonna be tough this year. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to committee reports, curriculum, educational programming, Justin.
Nothing to report. Our next meeting is January ninth at six PM. That's it.
At advance, Joe?
December first, we had a Zoom at advanced board of directors meeting, which was very brief. We basically, the board approved to authorize the executive director to negotiate and finalize the purchases of two properties in Torrington, which are the Old East School and the Church and Rectory on Grove Street. These will be renovated and brought up to date for offices and classrooms. The board also approved the next steps for at advance to enter into a RISC Alliance Cooperative, which is still in the process of being put together. And that's all I have for now.
Okay. Finance and operations, Alex.
Yeah, why don't I just do that the easiest? Yep, we had a meeting on December fifth. Why am I not showing up? Okay, I guess I am there in the side. The salary situation looks like it's gonna be, uh, looks a little better and it's gonna be under control. That's the good news. The bad news is diesel fuel costs are gonna go up significantly. Later on, we're gonna talk about the LED situation. I don't want to steal the thunder from that. We did have a proposal for a EV chargers out front. We turned that down because the cost of them was gonna be about eighty-five hundred dollars apiece. And we just thought that it wasn't reasonable. But the EV issue is gonna come back around when we get into the solar. We did talk about the budget, not to disagree with John, but the numbers, the highest number I remember hearing was nine percent. If, if, if the board had an appetite for that. But it, we were shooting to do zero, but it could be two, could be five, could be nine. And it depends on what the board comes to decide on. So anyway, that's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Alex. Strategic and long-range planning.
Yes, we had a brief meeting tonight and mostly to meet Mark and discuss our long-range plan with him. And we mostly focused on our path forward. We anticipate another update in February and we still feel we'll be on track to finish the plan late spring.
Okay. Very good. The next two items on the agenda, G and H, I'd like to move between action items two and three. They're mistakenly put up top. They should have been moved down. All business, we have none. New business and updates. Agri-science recruitment presentation. I'd like to recognize Mr. Kremmons, the Director of Ag Science.
Hey guys, thanks for having me. So I've been looking forward to giving this update to you guys. But we'll start with recruitment. So if you guys all have the document that I prepared, basically, I had the opportunity to go to most of the middle schools in our sending districts and I listed them here. Every school, every middle school except Brookfield allowed me to come to their school to present to their students. I very conservatively estimated the number of students to be at eight hundreds. It's definitely more than that, but I just didn't have an exact number. I think Danbury alone was probably close to that, but a lot of students, I met a lot of students. I met tons of counselors. I met a lot of the teachers. And it's just good, it's good for us going forward. And we've, we've, every presentation, kids had questions and kids came up and talked to me after. And counselors were all really excited to, to see some new, some new faces from our program. It was, it was very good and engaging for all of our schools, I could tell. That being said, our eighth grade open house, we held on November seventeenth. We had eighty families that signed in at the front desk. There was more families present than actually signed in, but those are the ones that I think had students or children planning on coming here. So it was an extremely well-attended event, more, more families than last year attended. And we, I received a lot of compliments from, from guests just about the professionalism of our students and just the event in general. They had a great time and our teachers did an excellent job in preparing for that. As of the eighth, I think that was Friday, we, we had twelve applications. This morning, I think we had fourteen. I've spoken to a lot of guidance counselors and other schools and they're, our deadline's not till January sixth. So they're kind of assembling packets from their schools to give to me closer to the deadline. So I'm anticipating quite a bit more, but that's, that's what we've got, the early birds, if you will. Once January comes around, Sofia Velez, the Director of Counseling, and I will interview all of the candidates. And we're looking forward to that process and, and getting a nice group of interested kids here next year. And we're, we're gonna notify those students in February as to whether or not they've, they've got in. Probably one of the most significant statistics here is the attrition. We've had zero students drop out of the program this school year so far, which is big for us. And we're gonna hopefully continue to, to keep these kids here. And that's, I think that summarizes recruitment as of now. We're still, again, we're still waiting on applications to come in and that sort of thing. But it, it was a very successful recruitment season, I would say overall. And just, I, I talked to so many parents that, that evening that are, they're planning on coming and they're excited about this place. So based on that, a lot of those interactions, I'm looking forward to a good enthusiastic group of kids joining us next year. I did want to take this opportunity just to give you guys an update about all of the other things that we've done collectively with as teachers and administration and, and central office employees. A, a lot of people have worked together to do these things that I listed in the bottom for our program. But we've, we've developed some concrete expectations for the agri-science staff summer contract. We've instituted standards of behavior, academics, attendance and SAE for our students. So basically now students have to do all of these things in order to remain enrolled in the agri-science program. And we've already seen instances of, you know, for example, SAE, we've, we've, we've had a lot of kids failing that in the past and we're down to in the twenties now, which I think at the beginning of the year, we were close to sixty-third of our, a third of our kids. So that, that number has dropped significantly. A lot of equipment organization has occurred and, and record keeping. We're creating maintenance schedules for a lot of our equipment. There were some unused spaces in our program that we've now, this is gonna go with some of the curriculum talk here in a second, but we've now worked in all of our facilities that we're, we're utilizing in all of our courses. Our barn is, is full of residents now. We've got six horses, three sheeps. We actually have four goats right now. We're, we're selling one. And we have a cow, Peppermint Patty, who we've already mentioned, and she's due to have a calf. And two of our goats might also be in a position to be bred as well. We've got a weekend operations assistant that we have been paying all year to come in on the weekends and take care of our livestock. This is huge for us. Traditionally, teachers have been tasked with coming in on the weekends, on holidays. And it's, it was a, a large burden on them in the past and we now haven't had that this year. We've revamped the SAE program and requested next year that point five school credits be attached to that requirement for sophomores, juniors and seniors. So this element of our program, I think, could use the academic benefit of a point five credit in order to help kids see the value in it. We also, our teachers have been brought to speed on what a appropriate SAE project looks like. And we're now helping students create more rigorous and beneficial projects. So that entire third of our program has really, really seen an increase. The FFA chapter, the FFA spirit, you, you saw the kids from Nationals, how fired up they were to be here. I've noticed it myself in the halls. I, I can see it over the course of these months, the attitudes of our kids are improving. We, I, I've, I've spoken to many kids who are considering applying for officer positions next year. We're getting more participation in CDEs. We're getting more participation in the events such as the holiday sale that you guys mentioned. It's, 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 it's looking really bright for the future of Chapag FFA. And we've also created a record-keeping system for students in the FFA. The Advisory Committee slash Consulting Committee, we've, we've revitalized that group as well. Our first meeting in September, we had over thirty-five people. This is a group of industry leaders who come together to just consult on various things in the program. We've, our alumni group, there's only six alumni groups in the state that are dues-paying groups. We're one of those six now. That's basically a parent group for agri-science programs to help raise money for scholarships and events, and we're now one. We've got two sixteen-passenger buses for our program that have been used for various field trips in class. We've taken kids to UConn for fall field days. Those are absolutely enormous. I, I can't say enough about those two buses, very, very important for us. We applied for a five thousand dollar grant from the Fairfield County Farm Bureau that we received for various greenhouse equipment. We started the Chapag Agri-science Apparel Store, which I noticed several of you guys purchased items for. Thank you. We sold a hundred and fifty-one items of clothing total. We have since restructured our curriculum and course selection. Next year, we added two new content areas, horticulture and landscaping and aquaponics and natural resources to give kids more choice and more focused areas of study. And we wrote a program of studies reflecting those changes just recently. Along with that, we've developed four new elective courses, those being farm-to-table, which is going to be a combination of vegetable production and food science, preparing the vegetables, canine basics and grooming in order to utilize our dog grooming facility, livestock showmanship, just another avenue for us to use our indoor riding arena and ag business and leadership to help students who are considering an entrepreneurship project or an FFA officer position. We got rid of the pathway requirement, so students can now take different courses each year of their high school careers to encourage more student choice. Our first wreath-making night was earlier this month. And we actually, we had over fifty people, parents and students attend. I, I had to open a second classroom actually because there were so many people, which is awesome. Next year, we're gonna have it in the garage, but it was an extremely well-attended event and parents had a lot of fun. Students did too. We just had our holiday sale, as you guys mentioned. Thanks for those of you that came out. And we actually, you mentioned Matt Sniffen resigned. He got a full-time position. We, somehow we've scrambled and found another sub for Megan Berry, who's a certified ag teacher. So that's gonna really help us out and hopefully they start after Christmas break. And that's kind of the big things. There's other things too that I didn't list here because they're not really set in stone, but one being the, the timber team. We proposed that Chapag start the fourth timber team, woodman's team in the state. We would be the fourth along with Nanawog, Wamago and Woodland. And I'm sure I'm missing other things, but those are kind of the big things that we're really proud of. Those are kind of the big things that we're really proud of. I did list some goals here for the upcoming months too. So. You know, we want this place to continue to be a place where kids wanna go and learn and, and a fun place. And we're gonna continue to do that in our department as well as in our building. We're looking forward to talking to these freshmen and getting a really high quality interested group of kids here. We're gonna continue to work with the advisory committee and hold some employability skills workshops with freshmen, and I. Hope I'll, I'll be reaching out to you guys and maybe can get some of you guys involved in that as well. We are just about to harvest our first. Group of hydroponic vegetables from the greenhouse. We should have close to eighty to a hundred heads of lettuce. Um, I'm planning on donating that to the Wash, a lot of it to the Washington Food Bank and kind of starting like a, uh. A monthly donation process with them. We are going to start talking about adult education. I know that some of you guys have participated in that in years past. It's another successful program that we're going to build upon. We're gonna hold our first FFA week this February. We've got two field trips planned as well as a, a staff appreciation meal. And a chapter social event. We're gonna make the program's first maple syrup in February's typically maple syrup time, but we've got all the equipment and we're ready to get that done. And we've got our first FFA banquet planned, uh, in the evening this year as well. And we're just continuing to make a list of awards and hopefully we're gonna get, give out a lot of money to students this year in scholarships. So. That's a pretty comprehensive update from our department and our program. And, uh, thanks, thanks for having me. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any. So we're still working with central office to kind of develop a solid number in that, in that field, but it would increase from a hundred and fifty-two. Correct. Um. It, it depends. There's a lot of variables that affect that, but. You know, we're, we're gonna have to see how many applications come in, but. We, I think it's safe to say that the number would be higher than a hundred and fifty-two next year.
Wait, Jen. We're, we're having some technical difficulties in your.
Let me know.
Okay.
Thumbs up. Tyler, so impressed with what you've been doing since you've arrived to Shapog. And so I know that all the feedback that I'm hearing from the community, um, is also positive. And hearing what you've presented, um, this evening just reinforces that. So just.
Jen, we're not, we're not getting you, your internet connection. Well.
So, so thanks, Jen. Uh, I'll definitely keep you guys posted. I, I will say that. We've, we've done a lot and we've changed a lot this year, and I think for the most part. Uh, m- most of the people involved in these processes have been super helpful and super supportive. Um, and I couldn't have, or we couldn't have accomplished these things without that. So. I will definitely keep the board informed going forward. But, uh, everything mostly to this point has been, uh, the result of everybody collaborating and working together.
Awesome. Thank you.
Very good. Jen, is that what you were trying to get?
Yes, I mean, just applauding him for his hard work and how. All the positive, um, comments that I've been hearing along the way and his presentation to me just reinforces that. I'm just really excited. Am, am I still stuck?
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, Angela and then John.
Uh, just two things. Um, I was approached by a New Milford, uh, family. They have a seventh grader and they are interested in applying after next year. So they were wondering, is there a Facebook page they can join or how would they get updates even a year in advance?
Nice. Uh, so Facebook, we do have a Facebook. It's managed by, uh, I think Margie Groth. We, we have an Instagram page that we post more current news on. It's, uh, Shapog Ag Sci. I think that's a good place to go for current happenings, if you will, in the program. But, uh. That's exciting that they're thinking this early, so.
Um, and I did attend on Saturday. It was amazing. It was. The entire scene, if you didn't get there, it, it was like something out of a Hallmark movie. It was just so pretty and just. You know, it was small, but it was walking around and it was just so pretty. So it was, uh, it was nice. And I did hear from a couple of families who couldn't get there because of other holiday commitments. So maybe expand to two weekends next year. I don't know if you sold out or not.
Yeah, so we've gotten a lot of feedback and we're gonna make some changes next year. That was. A good trial run for us. We did make a profit from that. So that's, you know, a, a good start. We are, we're hopefully looking to expand and, and that'll put us on the map, you know? So now hopefully people realize that we can. Get our Christmas products up at Shapog and, uh, but we. There were a few things like that. They were like, yeah, we have to, we have to reevaluate that and change for next year. So. Um, that's excellent feedback and we're definitely put that into place.
Okay, um, John, you had a question.
Yeah, so Pepper, Peppermint Patty is expecting. Perhaps we could get a pool. Uh, for the projected delivery date and, uh, time and, uh, donate the proceeds to, to a good ag cause.
I, I love that idea and, you know, I think, I think her due date is April. So, uh, Megan Berry will be back with us. Megan just had her baby actually today. She's supposed to have her baby. Um. I've heard students talking about it, naming it Junior Mint, and I'm, and I'm. Yeah, I think it's a great name, but, uh, Megan also had some really good ideas, uh, to, with that stuff too. She's really creative. But yeah, definitely. I think we should do something like that to involve the school community.
You, I'm gonna suggest superintendent just check with council on that because I do know that Connecticut has regulations concerning those kind of events, those gambling events. And the only thing I know of is cow chip raffles, and I think that the, the regulations are about forty pages long. Uh, and it's highly regulated stuff, but if we can figure out a way to do something, I'm, I'm all for it. All right. Other questions? Mary.
I just wanna say thank you. It was, it, it was, it's great. I, I went the day before the, uh, on Friday, on Thursday night. I went and I got my tree. Yeah, first one that I picked out, yeah. And it was great. And I saw all the wreaths and everything. It was great. It was a great, great event, and I'm glad you made money on it. That's, that's even better.
I am too, and, and like I said, only, only up from here and, and I appreciate everybody that came and it means a lot to us that. People from our school take the time and, and come. So. We will continue to build upon it and hopefully be even more successful next year. So.
Very good. Well, I enjoyed the two wreaths that I brought home and the ornaments hanging on my tree. So we're, we're, we're in great shape. I think we need to get word out, people, that this is where you come. At this time of year. So I think that's a, I think that's a grand thing and thank you for, for getting it all together. I, I thought it looked pretty good. So I, if you found ways to improve it, have at it. All right. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any. Thank you. We'll move on to the next new i- item, which is a year in review. Um, I'm gonna turn this over to Ben for, uh. Production. And that was the year. Uh, right. Just prior to that, we passed out the class of twenty-two report for your review and there's no formal presentation on it, but. We thought you might like to have it and take a look through it. If you have any questions, bring them to a future meeting. All right. The next item on the agenda is first reading of policy thirty-two eighty, gifts, grants and bequests to the district. I don't know if there's any. Presentation on this. Nicole, do you have anything to tell us about this policy?
No, it's, it's a policy that when we did the carryover from, um, our old policies to our new policies with Shipman. Um, some of the language was left out and we've gone back to revise it so that we can get the language that. Is necessary for the superintendent to be able to approve grants back into the policy.
Okay, and I presume that there's a process, there's, uh, a, a review of where the grants are coming from and that kind of thing. So we're, we're careful about which ones we would accept.
Correct.
Okay, any questions? Suggestions, comments? Issues, concerns? All right, I hearing none. If you do have anything, it would be appreciated if you could bring it to, uh. Our attention, at least by the time of the second reading next month. Okay, uh, next on the agenda, uh, art is, is an LED lighting at Shapog Valley School. Uh, you've seen some materials that have been presented. I don't know whether, Don, are you gonna present on this? Don O'Leary? Okay. Well, um. Would it help if you, would you, would you like mine? We have an opportunity here to, uh. To make our, our, our electricity. To, to actually get LED lighting in the rest of the places that we don't have it currently, which will allow us to reduce our energy consumption significantly. Uh, we are in a room with LED lighting primarily, LED lighting in this room. But it's not throughout the, the, the district. Um, and so this is an opportunity for us to make the entire district, uh. To have LED lighting everywhere, which is a tremendous, uh, savings, uh, on, on the cost of electrifying our buildings. Don?
Yes.
That's right. We haven't gone to the elementary schools.
That's correct.
Just, just Shapog.
So we're looking at completing the LED lighting in this school here. Um, up until now, we have been, as a district. Uh, self-funding our lighting changes to LED. And, um, we've gotten to a point now where we've gotten all the easier lights changed. And we have a lot of difficult lights. Um, some of you may or may not know, but. These lights under here serve two purposes. They, they serve to, um. As a diffuser for the air, the heat and the, and the cooling around that black line around the light, and then they serve as a light. So we can't remove them to change them to LED, but we can convert them. And that's what we see mostly left over in the classrooms and some of the other rooms throughout the school. So as part of the solar poten, the potential solar project. Um, we're looking to. Change the remainder of the fluorescents to LED to take advantage of a lower footprint so that the solar can do approximately. I think almost a hundred percent of our, of our energy needs here. So we do have some numbers to share with you and Nicole is a great number sharer, so I'll let her do that.
So the project class as it was presented to us was about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. There will be a twenty-one thousand dollar some odd, um, incentive from EverSource. And then, so the balance and then a, a further discount of eleven thousand. So the net cost to us would be eighty-two thousand dollars. But in order to do this project, we would have no upfront out of pocket costs because EverSource would finance that eighty-two thousand dollars for us. Um, by what they call on bill financing. It's a zero percent loan and we pay it back over sixty months. Um, and if you, uh, have the paperwork in front of you. Our monthly payment is estimated to be one thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Again, that's for a period of sixty months. But our electrical savings because of the LED lights would be one thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars. So we're actually realizing a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. Um, to the good. So. The fact that there's no out of pocket for us and it will update all of our lighting, um, we. Don and I've talked about it. We've talked with the finance and operations committee. We don't see a downside. And it will help. It'll tie into the, um, what we talk about next, which is solar. Because if we can get our usage down, then we can get more to a hundred percent carbon neutral on our electricity usage with our solar fields.
All right, so it, it seems to me like this is a no-brainer because it actually is money in our pocket to change over all the lights in this building to LEDs.
And, and after the fifth year. When we're not paying, well, we're, they say we're getting more.
Right, because we're saving energy costs. So yeah, so this, this is a, this is a real opportunity. Right. Because we're saving energy costs. So yeah, so this, this is a, this is a real opportunity for us because Don, you and I have talked about this a number of times. How are we going to get the rest of the building converted and, um, and then ultimately how are we going to get our other buildings converted all to LED?
One of the good parts about this too is it's all under warranty. It's five years of warranty. On parts and labor. So any of this stuff that goes bad in five years, we make a phone call, somebody else comes out, takes care of it and.
Whereas the stuff we've installed doesn't have a warranty.
Well, it, it's, the components do in some cases, but they, they're mostly not five years. They're somewhere in the two year range, most of those, but yes.
So as long as we're paying for it, it's under warranty and that's, that's a big thing.
That is true. However, it does have a, a much longer shelf life. And that's hard to, hard to tell what it's going to be. I, I have had lights go out in a year and then I've had them going on for five years now and they haven't gone out at all. So we'll see how that works. And, but the, the, the equipment is good quality equipment. It, it is good quality and Nicole and I looked over and talked. You know, it'll be installed by a, a good quality team also, so.
Okay. Um, do we want to go right into the solar program?
We might as well.
And that, the, both solar program and the LED lighting are here on the recommendation of the finance and operations committee, which voted to recommend it before the document.
Uh, I just had one question before, um, we move on to the next one. Is there a cost for us to replace the, the, the LED, the lights as they, um, go bad at all?
To do them all in one, one shot?
Oh, oh, yes. But no, I mean, what, to replace them as they need replacing. Did they do that? Is that included in the cost or we have to pay for that?
For the term of five years.
For five years.
Any of the equipment that they install will have a five year warranty for both the piece of equipment and the labor to install and remove the old.
Got it.
Sorry, I was confused.
Can I ask a question, Greg?
If there are no other questions, why don't we go on to discuss this? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Echoing, can we just?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Sorry. Sorry. Can you hear me?
Okay. Try now.
Let's try now. Um, is this including outdoor lights as well?
No.
Outdoor lights. Oh, I'm sorry. We were muted. Um, outdoor lights are all LED at this point in time already.
But the outdoor lights are not.
Our efforts and the AgSTEM efforts are gone.
But the outdoor lights are not motion censored, correct?
No, they are not motion sensitive. They're, they're controlled by our, uh, building automation system. So we have a timer.
Just as an observation, and I think I've mentioned this before, but and not that I'm out at two o'clock in the morning often. But there's been a few times driving along Painter Ridge that, um, at two o'clock in the morning, Shippag is lit up like Fort Knox. So, um, and I've just kind of wondered why there's so much, any lights that are on in the middle of the night? A lot.
Are we, we're going back and forth trying to keep you. So, um, the answer is, is, I don't know, but I'm going to check that out. Our BMS system, our building management system allows them to come on, um, after school ends. Um, and then go off just before midnight around eleven forty-five, I think they are. They come back on again in the morning very early and they run around till seven o'clock in the morning. So why they would be on during the night, I, I, I don't know, but thank you for sharing that with me and we'll go see what we can find.
Cause that's, it's a lot and there are a lot of lights. So just so you know.
Observation. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I want to follow up with what Jennifer just talked about. I know in the lead up to Ag, there was a concern throughout the community that uh, there may be excessive lighting and there are lighting, excessive lighting ordinances. So, um, yeah, I think anything past a certain hour is, is kind of not necessary.
John, if we may answer that, that's, that's why we don't allow them to go on from midnight till morning. We, we, you, you're right. It used to be when I first came here, they were on all night long, but we have since stopped that practice and, and we go off before midnight. Uh, the last people out of this building, the custodians leave about eleven o'clock. So we give them a little time to clear out and, and, and then we shut them off and then they come back on again before sunrise in the morning because we do have people coming in five thirty and six and it is dark. Um, so we've made every attempt we can to, um, to limit it to those times. And I'm going to investigate Jen's request. Um, the computer, uh, does keep a lot of data in it and, um, I suspect I may be able to find that. And if I can't find it, then we'll, we'll, we'll set up a couple of, uh, tests and we will.
Alexa, was it work?
All right. So that will be tweaked.
Absolutely.
Mary. Could, could that possibly have been a security thing that we keep some lights on?
Uh, Mary, um, there are in the building here, there are night lights that do stay on, but they shouldn't glow up to the top of the hill. And, and none of them on the outside should be on after those, those time periods, you know, from midnight till early in the morning. So, uh, it's interesting to, we'll take a look at.
Now, there are exterior lights, Don, near the entrance to this building, if I'm not mistaken, that stay on.
Okay.
Or, or are motion activated? I'm not quite sure. There, there is a light right near the entrance. I've seen come on and off.
Okay. Yes, you have. That particular light.
Be based on its own desire.
It overheats at times and it, it seems to come on and go off. Yeah. I, I noticed that recently too. We'll take a look at that.
All right. Other questions?
It's a big district, lots of lights, lots of things going on and everybody, you know, these, these interesting facts are our eyes and ears. We can't be everywhere, but it's, it's nice to see that other people do call, they, they email and text and call me. We check it out. We'll, we'll, we'll check it out. We certainly, we've been saving money as best we can and we're going to continue. So.
All right. The solar project.
See, if you have the documents that were in your packet, if you can ta, turn to page four of the solar project, which shows the investment grade design and layout, which is our four buildings. Just want to start there. Um, what we're presenting and asking for board approval to move forward on is um, for us to put an application in by February first to be considered as the, for the right to install these solar fields. So whatever you decide tonight is just for us to get the application to see if we can be chosen to be considered. This isn't, doesn't necessarily mean this plan will go forward. Um, we do have to be awarded the application. So we'd like to put a plan in for all four of our buildings to build four solar fields. Knowing that we need town approval on the elementary schools because they do own those properties. Um, we only own and control Shippag. So what this picture shows is where the solar fields are proposed to be placed on the individual properties, um, that we're going to pursue the application on with your approval. We just wanted, the solar fields are represented by the blue lines. We just wanted you to see where they would be so that you can see that they're out of the way um, of the areas of the campuses that we use. Um, and we presented to the finance and operations committee. It's probably been two months now, um, a different solar project that would have resulted in about a sixty percent return of our carbon footprint for electricity. Um, and we would be leasing the fields and we would have a small amount of maintenance involved, but we would be paid for the electricity. And this plan is different and it's more beneficial, we believe, to the district. So this, with this plan, we would not own these panels. They would be owned by Connecticut Green Bank. And we would have no maintenance or service requirements at all. So they would completely service them even to the point of cleaning snow or mowing grass around them. We would have no obligations whatsoever. We don't have to service them. If they break, we don't have to replace them. We don't have to worry about the weather. They do plug into our buildings, but we would have EverSource as our secondary source of power. And then connection, there would be no out of pocket cost to us to install these fields with the exception of a twelve thousand five hundred dollar application fee, which is half of the twenty five thousand dollar application fee that would be due February first. If we're awarded the project and we go forward, that fee is refunded. We would lose, if we're not awarded the project, it's refunded. We would lose it if we were awarded the pro, project and chose on our own merit not to go forward, then we would forfeit that deposit. Other than that, there's no out of pocket costs to the district. But we would enter into what's called a PPA, a power purchase agreement with Connecticut Green Bank to buy all of our electricity from them for the next twenty years at a fixed rate of six cents per kilowatt hour. And what that would do is it would fix our electricity cost so that the only thing we have to worry about is controlling, um, our usage. Right now, to give you a comparison of what we pay for electricity now, in some of our buildings, it's twenty cents a kilowatt hour. And in some of our buildings, it's thirteen cents a kilowatt hour. So at six cents a kilowatt hour fixed for twenty years, it's a good budgetary maneuver for the district. Um, especially given that we don't have to maintain the solar or rely on it as our primary source of power.
So we'd be saving about fifty to seventy percent depending on the building of our electricity cost for the next twenty years.
And more if, because presumably electricity costs will go up, but will be fixed. So our first few years, that's what would be our savings and then our savings would increase. Um, the other thing about this particular layout of these panels at the buildings is it renders all four buildings completely carbon neutral for electricity. It's a hundred, it will offset a hundred percent of our usage off of all those.
Isn't it seven and a half cents, like six cents?
So they came in at six cents when they did the proposal, it was seven and a half and they're trying to get it back down to six. But they think they're going to put the application at six cents. They ran the numbers at seven and a half so that they could run them conservatively so they didn't oversell.
And we talked about the EV chargers earlier. Um, we have an opportunity to connect EV chargers into this system um, at a much lower cost and we'll consider that as we go forward.
Yeah. Our concern, I think about the EV chargers is, is that you install something, spend, we don't really want to pay to install them. You install it and then in three years, it's completely obsolete.
Right.
I mean, that, that area is changing massively. And you know, you don't want to install something that takes eight hours to charge your car, when in three years you can do it in fifteen minutes. Uh, so that, that, that's the direction things are, are heading. So I think we probably want to be circumspect on, on those. Maybe we'll put a couple of them in if they're willing to pay for them. But remember something, whoever plugs in is going to have to pay for it. It's not going to be free. Or charge your car on it. So that's, you know, that's something we have to look at, but, uh.
Like Alex says, we, we felt that, that going with this, down this road and using these people while they're digging lines, et cetera, to, to run to our locations uh, would be much cheaper than outlaying the eighty five hundred to thirteen, thirteen, uh, thirteen, uh, thirteen thousand. There were, there were three different chargers. There, the cheapest of them was eighty five hundred and the most expensive was thirteen. But, thousand, but like you say, technology keeps pushing them, pushing them back and, and the newer ones keep coming out. So this project gives us a little more time to let that happen and to give us some, uh, uh, the ability to think about where we may want to put them and how many and whether we even want to do that.
Okay. The other thing is the solar fields, if you look at the chart in that page four, where they're going to be at Shippag, they're going to be across the road at the end of the greenhouse. They'll be across that road, that hillside, i- is going to have the trees removed. And, and they'll be over there on that, just about that entire hillside surrounding the, the back end of the school.
So if you went to the greenhouse and looked down the hill, that's where you.
That's what you'll see. You'll see solar. But on the other side of that is a power line easement. And I don't think this will be visible to any residences in the area. So it's a, it's a pretty good place to locate it. Uh, at Booth, they're going to be along the edge of the field, uh, at the north end of the property. So those are in an area where no one really uses or does very much with it and they'll be facing the sun, not facing the adjoining residential neighborhood. At, at Burnham, they're going to be in an area that's currently not used. It's currently a wooded area. And at Washington Primary, they're going to be in the back, um. Oh, wait a minute. Have I got that wrong?
So, yeah.
Upper right is.
Yeah.
So if you were coming in off the road, you'd follow that, that roadway down along the river and not hang a left on the south. You'd go straight down as the bus, as a bus would roll and it's off in that corner between, between the shield where people look at birds and stuff and the, um, and the river. So it's, it's, it's off behind the basketball court. So, um, it, when, I've been here quite a, quite a while now and, and I don't see that area being used for anything other than it's still, it still has the loop, the walk loop around the behind it. So this area isn't really used for anything other than kids running around and there's plenty of room for that to happen.
Right. And when people ask you the question, why are you not putting them on the roof? It's because we don't want to put twenty five year solar panels on a fifteen year roof and have to pay to take them off every time the roof has to be done. And, and the build, and this building would not, I don't think any of the buildings would support them. They'd need to be completely restructured. So this is an opportunity to go carbon neutral on the electricity. Uh, at pretty much, I don't want to say no cost, less than no cost because we'll be getting our electricity a lot cheaper than we otherwise would. So this is a, a great opportunity, I think. Uh, for, for us to do something good for the environment. And the other cool thing about it is unlike before, where all we were getting were credits. Now we're actually getting the juice. This is going to power our buildings, uh, with backup for when the sun doesn't shine, I suppose.
Nicole worked hard on these, these guys. They, they came in and wanted to sell sixty percent of it and we should close the door and wouldn't let them come back until they had hundreds. Just know that.
The other thing that's, um, just sort of a bonus of doing these projects is they come into the school buildings and they put the metering in places where the student, the teachers can use it as part of the curriculum and students can use it to, um, watch the readings and watch the electrical generation, watch how that whole thing works. And it's specifically designed for an educational setting.
So between the fact that we're, the, the sun will be generating our electricity. Uh, between that and the, and the, and the water bottle stations where you can fill your own bottle and you can see how many of those little plastic bottles you save by not doing it. Uh, we're making some strides and showing a more sustainable school. Um, and I think that's, that is what the generation of students that here is demanding that we do and write to them. They are absolutely right on this.
That's true. We've, we've been looking hard for, for something like this ever since it started to come up as, as an issue. But we didn't want to settle for anything on the roofs or anything smaller than a hundred percent. This will keep any maintenance out of our building and off of our roofs and, and no issues in regard to them. So it seems to, it seems to fit the bill really well.
And Don, I assume you're very pleased that you will not have your maintenance people out cutting the grass around these things. Uh, that will be taken care of. No, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us. I just, one thing, only thing I would ask is that we please let the rest of the world know that we're doing this, if and when we get the award and we, and we, we go forward on it. Uh, and I understand that we have a better chance of getting the award by not combining this into one big project.
Yes.
Uh, because apparently the, the way costs work, you can either have a small project, a medium project or a large project. And the, the, the savings incentives are greatest for small projects. Uh, they're less for medium and they are a lot less for large and they're only going to do five large projects in Connecticut. So we don't want to be large. We want four different. So we've got three, we've got three small ones and, and Shippag is a medium sized one. So that, that's what we're hoping to get the grants for and, uh, we, you know, we're, we're optimistic. We hope we get it. Uh, Mary and then John.
Um, what was the cost? Um, the, yeah. What is the, like, we, we pay thirteen percent, thirteen cents.
Power?
Yes.
Yeah. But right now they're, they're going to fix it somewhere around six cents.
Oh, cool.
They had, they had, ran the numbers originally at seven and a half.
That's really cool. The other question.
They're presently paying anywhere from eighteen to twenty-two.
Thirteen to twenty.
Yeah, then thirteen's going up to twenty-four.
Kind of bounces around.
The other question is, since we won't own it, if we generate more power by having the solar than, uh, than we use, we, we're not able to sell it back to the company. Is that correct?
We're not able to sell it back. So.
Because, because we don't own it.
Being owned by Green Bank and then they're selling power back to us.
Kedok.
Good question. Other questions? John?
Just a comment. I, if I, uh, if my memory recalls, um, Uh just a comment, I, if I uh, if my memory recalls um. The the best part about it is, um if all four facilities go on solar. Um over twenty years, the projected savings would be about. One million, two hundred and fif- two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh which is. Pretty good.
It'll help buy some books.
Well, you know, you know, we've talked about this before, in our budget, we have uh about seventy-two percent of it is is uh salaries and benefits. And those are all, those are mostly, almost all, not quite, but almost, most of those ninety, ninety-something percent of them. Are negotiated union contracts that we we negotiated, we put, we put down what they are, we know what it is. So we can't really do much about those because we've agreed to that. Uh there's a lot of transportation and electricity and heating costs that we don't have a lot of say in. We don't get to determine what the temperature is outside or how many hours the lights need to be on or whether it's cloudy today and we need more lights. Uh this is one of the few situations in which we can take a fixed fee that we formerly had no control over. And have actually gotten some better control over it. And I think that's, that's a great reason to do it, because that's the part of the budget we often can't do anything about. And so this is really a boon to the taxpayers of the three towns to be able to to take that kind of cost and do something about it. And so I'm very pleased with this proposal for that reason as well, which I think is a good budget, it's a good budget move to make. And I hope, John, you agree with that as the treasurer, because I know you you watch the budget like a hawk, Alex, I know you do too. And uh I think this is a great opportunity.
And just to speak to the numbers, the one point two million that John is referencing is actually just the savings at Chappag. If we were able to do all four campuses, the twenty, the savings would be closer to two million, actually just over two million.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a strong incentive to do it, uh and it's the right thing to do, I think, from an energy usage perspective. Really is. And believe me, the company that's doing it is is making out as well, so it's everybody, everybody gets a chance to to win on this because Nicole drove a hard bargain.
True.
Okay, uh we'll take this up under action items later, action on these two, but is there any other questions or any other, anything else to present? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Well, we are now at the action items and the first item is a motion, uh uh we'll um entertain a motion. Uh to uh in, enter into the agreement for the LED lighting at Chappag Valley School on the terms that have been outlined to us. Is there a second? Moved and seconded, uh is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Jen says aye. All right, and all those opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. And all those abstaining, please indicate. Okay, uh the vote is eleven in favor, none against and one abstaining. Okay, uh next motion is, I'll entertain a motion to uh enter into the. Uh agreement uh to apply for the solar project for all region twelve schools. Um is there a motion? So moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, discussion. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. And all those abstaining, please so indicate. I see no objections or ob- uh no nay votes and no abstaining, so it's unanimous, twelve, nothing uh to do that. Okay. Um the next item, uh. I had put on an executive session for discussion of board members, education members conduct. John, we've talked about this, you have in the past said you want this an open session, but I put this on the agenda in case you change your mind and wanted it in closed session. That's why it's on here, and I'm sorry I didn't see your email until right before this meeting. Um asking me about that, so tha- that's why it's on here, so it's your, it's your choice as to whether you wanna do this in open or closed session. Okay, so we will not have an executive session uh or action on the executive session, this will be an open session. And uh we are now um at action item number three, which is a motion uh to censor Board of Education members' conduct. This was what was requested at the last meeting and there was prepared a uh. What I am passing out is a motion that was drafted with the advice of council. For a ce- censure motion, yes, Pete. Well, I'd say it's up to the board to decide how to handle it, I suppose, uh there's a motion to be put on the floor for discussion. Uh and then there is, we're obviously gonna afford um John every opportunity to make his points and to present his materials. Um and then the board can decide whether it wants to make a decision tonight or it wants to postpone the decision to a future meeting, that's the board's pleasure. Uh you know, we don't, you know, this can be uh. We can delay consideration to a future meeting or we can move to to a- take action on it tonight. I, it's, it's up to the board, it's not my decision, I'm not gonna make a decision on how I wanna handle it. Well, yeah, a- after the motion is put on the table and is moved and seconded and then um. We'll have anyone who wishes to speak about the motion and then we'll give John an opportunity to respond to the motion. Well, we'll see, we'll see how it goes and what the board's pleasure is, uh I think that's um. I think that's the idea here, uh and and if if there's more time needed than the board, I'm sure the board will wanna take the additional time if that's what it feels it wants to do. Okay. Uh there is a motion that is in front of you and I would entertain a motion to put this on the table so that we can discuss it. Um making the motion does not start the, it's only the start of the process, it's not the action itself, just making and seconding the motion. Um I can read this motion. All right. Whereas, the chairman of the Board of Education. Um appointed a personnel search committee. Committee to commence a search for the new superintendent of schools to fill the existing vacancy in that office. And, well, it's no longer an existing vacancy, but it was at the time. Whereas the chairman appointed the twelve members of the Board of Education to serve on the committee. Whereas John Bonayudo is one of those members appointed to the committee. And whereas the committee interviewed a total of nine candidates for that position. And whereas the committee called two of those candidates back for a second interview. Whereas board member John Bonayudo placed a telephone call to one of those candidates. And whereas this telephone call was made without a vote or other authorization of the committee or the chairman. And whereas Mr. Bonayudo did not notify the committee of his actions either before or after calling the candidate. Now therefore, the Board of Education does hereby make the following findings and take the following action. One, the conduct of a member of a personnel search committee, and in this case, John Bonayudo, in calling or otherwise contacting a candidate. For the position the committee is seeking to fill without the authorization or knowledge of the committee or its chairman is wrong. And two, a member of a personnel search committee, and in this case, John Bonayudo reasonably would know. Or should know that it is wrong to take such unilateral action. And three, such action is inconsistent with the proper operation of a personnel search committee. Because all members of the committee have the same information and should be aware of all actions taken by committee members in the search process. And for the foregoing reasons, the board does hereby censure John Bonayudo for the aforementioned conduct. Which was inimical to the process of an executive search and the interests of the region, regional school district number twelve. That's the motion that's in front of you, somebody move it.
Still moved.
I'm sorry, Jen is trying to talk, I, can you turn her on?
Still moved. Can you hear me?
Move, is there a second? Moved and seconded, now discussion. Does anyone wish to address the motion in particular before we get to John's part of it? Well, the motion consists of several clauses that are designed to set forth the facts. Or or to set forth, yeah, the facts and 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 basis. Uh and then it has three findings and then finally an action to censure. Just so you're aware, an action to censure is in part an educational process. Whereby someone whose conduct has violated the standards and norms uh is educated as to how not to. As to why that's wrong and and what behavior should happen and it, and then it is a uh an indication of the board's. Making these findings and unhappiness with what happened and and in an effort to educate and change and modify behavior. And so that really is the purpose of a motion for censor, to censure. And um it does not have any impact on the tenure of a person who is censured, they are not removed from the board, they are not uh. No other action is taken against them, it's simply a a both educational and disapproval uh by the board. And that's what the point of a motion for censure is. Uh it is pretty much what the board can do if there's conduct that it believes is wrong. Um so I want, I'd like to start with the with the educational part of this, uh as I've, yeah. Mary.
The the other thing that maybe you wanna mention is we all did sign a non-disclosure uh agreement and I think. That doesn't necessarily come onto this, but it's, it should serve to say that you don't do things like that. You don't go out on your own and do things.
Okay, well, the the one thing I can pass along is that in general, a personnel search committee operates very similar to the board. Uh it is a committee. And a committee can only act through its collective action. No individual can act independently of the committee. Uh the only person that can speak for the Board of Education is the chairperson or someone the chairperson authorizes. Um when it comes to a personnel search committee, it's the same process, it's only the committee. Can authorize someone to speak for the committee other than the chairperson, who has the authority to speak for the committee. But the, but anyone else or any other action taken must be done collectively and that's the process of a committee. And so when an individual goes outside the committee's process and without the permission. Or disclosure in advance to the committee of what they're planning to do. Uh then that action is simply wrong, it's in, it's not in the nature of how a committee functions for individuals to freelance and take their own action. And uh that, that's the nature of of a committee, uh that's how committees work both under Roberts rules. Uh and under uh the uh the way we function as a Board of Education and and when we appoint a personnel search committee. It needs to act as a committee, which is collective action only, please. And so that, that's the 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 nature of this, this is not, this motion does not address any issues of letters to the editor. Or anything else, and I noticed that there's, there's information that's been submitted on that. But the only thing this motion for censure is addressing is the con- is the conduct in contacting a um a candidate for superintendent. Without the consent of the committee or the authorization of the chair. Um so, I don't know if anyone has, I mean uh. I don't know if anyone disagrees with any of the whereas clauses, uh. I mean, I think we all know that we did have a vacancy as a superintendency and I appointed a personnel search committee, that's in the minutes. You will find that in the minutes if there was a personnel search committee created and authorized and I appointed twelve members to the members of the Board of Education. Um so the first two whereas clauses are covered by that. I think it's clear that John was one of the members, uh we interviewed nine candidates for the position. I think that's clear, um I don't think, if anyone disputes that it was nine, let me know, but I think, I think it was nine people we interviewed. And we did call two of them back for a second interview. Um and I think John has said that he placed a telephone call to one of the candidates, uh that is said at the, I believe, upon the twenty-fourth. Uh of October. So uh this telephone call, if, I don't, I don't, does anyone recall that we took a vote to authorize this telephone call to be made? I don't recall taking any such vote, so we didn't take a vote to do it and I certainly didn't authorize it, didn't know about it. Um and we did not receive notifications as a committee either before or after. We found out about it another way, it came to us through through. Through a different method, it didn't come from, it wasn't disclosed to us. So I think all of the whereas clauses are correct. Uh I think that the. These prerogative clauses are all correct. Okay, so then the next question is on the findings. Does anyone think it's right for for a member of a committee to to make a personal, without authorization, call to a candidate when we're interviewing candidates? This says it's wrong, does anyone believe it's right?
None of the rules governing that. If you like what you think, I'm not concerned about what you think or any of the board thinks. What makes that it's an error or a wrong?
The nature of how committee functions, it it's, it's, I mean, there's, there's.
Or you, you, you repeating something that's written somewhere, exactly what you tell me.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that it's, I mean, if if you, if you read, if you read things like Roberts Rules of Order and how things function and how boards and. Uh and um and uh committees and organizations function, they function collectively, they don't function individually. Individual members have no power, on this board, for example, no individual is permitted to speak for the board. Be without authorization because you don't have that power. Uh the board speaks as a whole, the chairman speaks for the board, and that's the way it works, so it's the same thing with any committee, that's how a committee functions. I can tell you, having counseled hundreds of organizations. Um and and having been involved in the conduct of many, many meetings. That's the nature of a committee, it's a collective group that has authority to make a decision collectively, not individually. So uh I discussed this with our counsel and I will tell you that he confirmed that this is. The nature of the, the lawyer whose firm has written our policies has told us that this is how a committee functions. That I'm correct that that's how a committee functions.
Greg.
I, I think it's reasonable that we should all know these things. And if we don't, the process of censure is a process of education.
Hey Greg.
Just one, one second, um and then finally, um. In order for the committee to have the same information, you need to hear it all at meetings, we can't have individual information and individual research. Uh that that goes on outside the meetings, and so those are the basics of the of the of the, the findings, Jen, and can you?
I also just wanted to mention to you that we hired a consultant. In this case, Dave Irwin, to be the liaison between the board, the committee and the candidates. So to Pete's point, it was only Dave that was reaching out to the candidates, it was Dave that was walking the candidates in and walking them out. Greg, you weren't involved in that process, none of us were, so the way that this has been set up from the beginning. It lends itself that the only person that was in contact with the candidates was as our consultant. So it should be very clear to all of us how the process was working. Right?
Okay, uh yeah, well, I, I had, I had no conversation with any candidate except what conversation I had at meetings.
That's because we hired a consultant to do that, to 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 do that. We paid, we paid money to have somebody do that. It was not our job, it was not the committee's job, it was not the chairman's job.
Well, and and it does serve also to insulate the board from any criticism for for poorly timed comments or anything else to a candidate. For a position in a, in a public school system. timed comments or anything else to a candidate for a position in a, in a public school system to have a person do that who is a trained professional in the area of conducting interviews for superintendent and executive positions. And so i- in addition to the fact that we hired a consultant, it also insulates the board from problems, from legal problems that can result from, from those communications. And so there's.
But our consultant also.
I'm sorry, Jen's off. Can you put her back on?
Sorry. But the, can you hear me?
Yeah.
And the consultant that we hired was very clear, extremely clear about the process. So I, it was very clear from the beginning how it was working, how it was moving forward, what his role was, what our roles were. And it was laid out in a very simple, clear way.
We're not, we're not having a discussion of the substance. I'm sorry. Can you turn that off? Yeah, no, we're not having a discussion of the substance. The substance is not relevant. The motion is entirely based on the mere fact of contacting a candidate. Believe that contacting a candidate is not a correct thing for a committee member to do without authorization of the committee or the chairperson. It's entirely on the issue of contact irrespective of what is said. Yeah.
Couple things. So I did not re-review the, the non-disclosure, which I guess I should have, but taking what Mary said, that that particular advisor was not in there, that you could not contact a candidate. I agree that it's probably an assumption and it's, and it's unsaid, but when Jen says it was very clear, I think it's, it's, what's clear is it wasn't clear to John. I don't know that John, this came to light obviously before our next meeting. I don't think that John would have hidden it. I think John would have probably been the first person to say, hey, I reached out to, you know, Mr. X, who said the following. So all of that is just going into, I'm really big on graduated discipline. So censure, it's pretty serious. It's a formal action by the board. And I'm wondering if we can do something less restrictive, which would be in an education setting to obviously now, I believe whether John agrees or not, that he should have been able to do what he did. I think he now understands, or he should understand that in, on a going forward basis, that can't happen. But perhaps something of, you know, listen, if John or anyone wishes to write a letter identifying themselves as a board member or reaching out to somebody in personnel, that it gets run through the chairman first. I think censure's, it's, it's pretty serious.
Greg.
Greg? Just one second, I'm reading something. Okay. Um, okay. Well, we are, we are going to, but we, we've got a motion on the floor and I think we're just having discussion of that motion. So if, if there's no further comments at this time, then I would, that was where I was heading, heading next. Yeah.
I noticed something interesting on page two of this document right here. The, the one that has the letter to Dr. Rodriguez on it. It is page two of. Response, or it begins with response to the proposed motion of the chairman of the Region 12 Board of Ed to censure board member John Boniuno for allegedly being wrong. Page two of that document. Let's see. Third full paragraph down, the one that begins with there with a specific invitation by the applicant, which application was addressed by two individuals and also the quote esteemed members of the Board of Education has specifically stated, quote, "I look forward to hearing from you in order to discuss my credentials in more detail," close quote. I'm wondering if, and I, I know I'm forcing an issue of semantics here, the you in this case is functioning as a collective. And it's, I'm just wondering if, if you're interpreting that you as, you know, the 12 of us on the committee, including, and, and including Dave Irwin. The way 11 of us interpreted this you was the collective. And it seems like you, you're focusing on like, well, this was a personal invitation to me. Again, it's semantics. I understand that, but.
Well, it's semantics because the English language is an individual view and a collective view and it's the same word. Instead of, instead of making it a collective one, we all, we use you.
Honestly, I'm just wondering if, if much of this is stemming from a misinterpretation of that, you know, not understanding that the you here refers to a committee, you know, a collective and not 13, 13 individuals?
13 individuals.
That's all I wanted to say.
Greg, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, Jen, I'm sorry. I, you're blocked by something on my screen. Go ahead.
It's fine. You know, Angela, I think your point is well made. I think unfortunately with the last meeting that we were at where it was brought up and, and maybe he's had a change of heart, but he pretty, he seemed pretty intent that he did wasn't wrong. So I think that that's kind of why we're.
Go ahead. No, wait a minute, wait a minute, Jen. Hold on. We can't hear you, Jen. Hold on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can now.
Thank you. So Angela, I think, I think we wouldn't be here in this moment had John taken responsibility for the, the, the fact that he did something that he shouldn't have done. But he actually kind of, in my interpretation, he doubled down and seemed pretty adamant that what he did was okay and appropriate, which was for me the bigger issue. We, we can make mistakes and be like, oh my gosh, I really wasn't appropriate. And that, looking back, I can really see how that I went on my own and I really shouldn't have done that and I need to act as a board of 12, not a board of one. But that wasn't what I saw. I saw somebody who was pretty adamant that what he did was right and, and he had the right to do that. And so moving forward, the concern for me is, is that if he truly is acting as a board of one, when there's 12 of us, I think that there needs to be a strong reprimand to that behavior.
May I respond to that, Greg? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yeah.
Uh, that's exactly my point. My point is that John doesn't believe he did anything wrong and he doesn't have to believe he did anything wrong. All he has to do on a going forward basis is agree that even though he doesn't believe what he did is wrong, that he has to follow a different set of rules. He doesn't have to agree with them. He has to, he has to agree to follow them. You know, it's really no different when, and this is kind of extreme, you know, there are people who plead guilty. There are people who go to trial. You maintain your innocence and you go to trial. You get convicted. That doesn't mean that you don't maintain your innocence. You go before a parole board and parole says, we're not going to grant you parole because you're not showing remorse. And people say, I'm not going to show remorse. I pleaded innocent. I had a trial. I still maintain my innocence. What I took from that meeting with John was he truly, truly believes that he was allowed to do what he did. And that is why he did it. And I said then, I don't believe he had any ill will. I don't think he said, I don't really care what you guys think or what the rules say. I'm going to do it. To this day, I don't believe he has to acknowledge that. He, I think he has to acknowledge, my bad, I did not realize I was allowed to do that. However, on a going forward basis, I will not do that. I, I think he can say, listen, I read that letter. I read the disclosure. It said, feel free to call me if you have any questions and that's what I did. But on a going forward basis, I have now been educated and I will not do that. So I, I think that kind of makes my point.
All right, we, okay, Mary.
The, the truth is, is I, John didn't see what he did was wrong and I think he would do it again. And that's the problem. It's not that it, what he did was wrong and he believed what he, that, that what he did was not wrong, but going forward, I don't, I don't believe that he wouldn't do it again given the choice.
But no one's asked him that.
Well, we'll find out, but that's what he indicated before.
But that's a presumption. Stephanie.
We're calling that a presumption, but also this is the only, the only time that we're going to censure for a specific issue, but this is not the first time we're discussing this particular type of situation. And I, I don't know if you heard that Angela, but you know, this is maybe the, the most formal attempt to censure an issue like this, but this is not the first time we've had this discussion. So I, this coming to light after maybe multiple times of hearsay or, you know, issues that have come to the board before where we think these type of situations have happened. So again, you know, you're, you're, you're talking about it like it's maybe an isolated instance and I totally agree with you. When someone makes a mistake, you can go, okay, this is a learning experience. But when someone makes repeated mistakes in the same thing, at some point, this is an appropriate discussion.
Then let me ask you a question. So censuring is essentially, we're unhappy with you. You did something wrong. And, and it's a, a formal, I get that. Wouldn't it be better for education purposes to extract a promise of, listen, whether I agree that I was wrong or not wrong, what I do agree on a going forward basis is not to act again independently, even if I think I, I'm allowed to or well within my rights without getting approval from the chairman of the board? I mean, I, I think a promise is better than, we're really mad at you. You've been formally, you know, sanctioned.
I, I hear you, but then I'd argue, when is censure ever necessary? Because then every single time there's an infraction, we can just say, just promise not to do it again.
Have we ever gotten that promise before?
Have we ever had to do it publicly?
I mean, I, I don't know. I'm asking like I, this is the first incident that I've been involved in. And so I guess my question is, you know, a simple, listen, whether you agree or not, you can't do what you did. Can we get a promise that it's not going to happen again? And you're going to know in short order whether something happens again. And maybe John's not interested in that. I don't know, but I, I think no one's asked him.
Any further comments before I, go ahead.
Well, I was not here for the executive session. I did read the transcript and I guess where I'm getting a little bit stuck is that it was made so extraordinarily clear on so many different occasions through these processes that this was something that we were not supposed to do. And so it wasn't, it didn't just come up once. It came up a number of times with a number of different candidates. So I'm, I'm anxious to hear from John, but you know, a, a sentence in a thank you letter would certainly not override all the times we were told over and over how this works and what, what we should and shouldn't do. So I, I'm kind of stuck on that to understand how it could be interpreted any differently.
Okay. Anything further before I have John respond? All right. I'd like to ask people not to interrupt and to allow John to make his presentation without interruption. If you have questions, um, John, how would you prefer to, would you prefer to wait till the end or would you prefer that people raise their hand if they have a question?
Just wait till the end. It's.
Okay. Then that's what we'll do.
Four pages.
No, that's all right. That, that's your, your prerogative and I want you to have, I want this to be fair.
And then can I re-address the question?
Yeah, you can. There's going to be back and forth. I mean, clearly, I don't see any reason not to do that. Okay. So please don't interrupt. John's been very patient and I think we should do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to preface my presentation by saying, it's not often that a board of ed gets to choose a superintendent. And I had the opportunity to be among the people who chose the previous superintendent. That process was entirely different. I think Greg was there, Peter was there, I was there. Were you there, Julie? It was entirely different. The, the board of ed members got to ask many personal questions of the candidates every time they came back and they came back multiple times, especially during, at, for the finalists. So I never was happy with the process set up by the Cooperative Educational Services, but I sort of went along with it until, um, and, well, I'll, I'll just continue my presentation. The following is my response to the proposed motion by the Region 12 Board of Education to censure me, John Boniuno, for allegedly being wrong. I deny that my actions were in contravention to any board policy, bylaw or directive written or oral. The accusation asserted in the proposed motion to censure rests entirely on matters that are not a violation of any board policy, bylaw or directive. The standard cited in the motion is wrong, which is a term impermissibly vague in order to make any determination of misconduct. And then I included the bylaw for the, for the censure. As for the hearing held on October 24th, and this, this in my mind came out very clearly during that hour and five minutes, it was more than just the letter. People had a lot of animosity built up about, it was more than just the phone call. People had a lot of animosity built up concerning the letter I wrote. I was not provided any notice or substance of that executive turn into public session, nor were any allegations against me presented prior to that evening. I had assumed that the hearing's genesis was a letter I sent to voices concerning various misstatements and misconceptions that were contained in an article about the Washington Daycare Initiative. A fair reading of that letter in no way states that I spoke or intended to speak for the board. Quote, "It is my ethical duty that a board of education member recognize that they represent the entire community and they must ensure that the community remains fully informed of school district related matters." So that's Exhibit G, Board of Education Code of Ethics Bylaw 9271, Paragraph Three. Without board discussion or a vote, Chairman Kaba penned a letter to the editor rebuking and chastising me for outlining my personal knowledge of what was presented to the full Board of Education and what was not. During his October 24th testimony, Chairman Kaba stated that even he cannot speak for the board without having discussed with the board what their position is. There are no minutes of any board meeting authorizing such a public rebuke directed at a sitting board member and no official authorization to send such a rebuke of the board member on behalf of the Board of Education. All over correcting facts based on personal knowledge and for exercising my First Amendment rights. I contend that this motion to censure is a pretext to keep me quiet. After the chairman sent an email to the board criticizing my letter to the editor, I responded a demand for a retraction, Exhibit F. Shortly thereafter, the agenda for October 24th was posted with the executive session concerning the performance of a board member. I was not provided any official information from the chairman or anyone else as to the subject matter of that executive session. I, I should note that just before the executive session was to occur, the chairman told me it was not about the letter, it was about my phone call. the chairman told me it was not about the letter, it was about my phone call. Also on October 24th, during accusations that I had violated numerous policies and bylaws over several years, a board member implied that I, quote, "was undermining the efforts of a committee by publicly putting something in a newspaper for discussion and that it was just a bit subversive, a little manipulative." End of quote. Just to be crystal clear, as I stated in my letter to the editor and even up until this very day, no one from the Washington BOS, the Washington Economic Development Committee, nor the Washington Economic Development Coordinator, Michelle Gora, has ever consulted with the full board or any board committee, for that matter, concerning purposing the first floor of the central office building to a daycare and moving the existing and fully functional, uh, central offices to the second floor, no less allocating funding for an environmental study. Needless to say, no committee has ever been undermined. Regarding board authority and the issue of a search for a new superintendent, please note that the only board authorization for hiring a search firm of which I am aware was made on May 16th, 2022. That's exhibit C. There was no board voted authorization for the board chairman to publicly set forth criteria for a new superintendent, exhibit D, after candidates had been interviewed. This newspaper publication with the chairman's statements was something that I believe a remaining candidate might find helpful and was a catalyst for my phone call. There was a specific invitation by the applicant, exhibit E, redacted, addressed to Dr. Dumas, Mr. Irwin, and the esteemed members of the board of education, I being one of them. That stated, "I look forward to hearing from you." That's the second page. In order to discuss my credentials in more detail, the unredacted version of exhibit E also included the applicant's phone number and email address. I asked permission to speak with the candidate when I called. He didn't seem to surprise or uneasy, and at no point did I state that I spoke for the board of education, but wanted to make him aware of the board chairman's statements in the then recent newspaper article. Again, and for the record, I was provided an unredacted application cover letter from the candidate with email and phone number included. I made the assumption that it was proper to contact him directly based upon three things. There was an open invitation by the candidate to reach out to him. Neither the search firm, Cooperative Educational Services, nor the chairman redacted or excluded this candidate's contact information from the materials that were provided to me as a member of the search committee. Three, I signed and abided by the non-disclosure agreement that was required. I was never presented or asked to sign a no-contact clause. Since the chairman had made material criteria public, I thought it prudent to make the candidate aware of the published article. It was indicated during our conversation that he had already seen and read it. As hiring a new superintendent was, in my mind, one of the most critical decisions I would ever make as a board of ed member, I wanted to be absolutely certain that I would make the right choice concerning hiring a candidate for the most important job in our three towns, that being the person most responsible for educating our children, the management of our staff and facilities, as well as a liaison with our communities. Please note that a number of derogatory comments and baseless allegations were directed at me by certain board members on October 24th. One board, board member accused me of calling board members stupid and dumb. Passage from the board member, uh, campaign endorsement, from another board member can, campaign endorsement that I need. What I actually wrote in my endorsement of a candidate was, "Speaking from my personal experience, a board of ed member must possess a few core ingredients, common sense, an inquisitive and investigative nature, and fiscal responsibility are in my mind essentially qualities that frankly, most of the current board of ed membership lacks." Not certain how this passage was translated into anything resembling the words stupid or dumb. Another member disclosed statements made in executive session in an effort to imply some confidential information was disclosed on my part, which absolutely never happened. I referenced the transcript, page 42. That member's actual violation was condoned by the silence of this board. Also attached, exhibit G, or I have 12, but it's eight. Various letters and documents by current and former board members wherein they identified themselves as members of the region 12 board of ed. They do not state they were authorized by the board of ed, rather they represented themselves as board members. One example from a current, current member, "As a region of 12 board of ed member representing Washington, I took an oath." And then went on to further state, "I represent a public school, thus speaking for the board, a town, and speaking for the schools as well." Request is made for those members previously referenced to recuse themselves from discussion and voting on this motion. Over a month ago, I demanded all communications between the board chairman and any and all of the other board members, including the substance of any phone calls between board members prior to the meeting of October 24th regarding the accusations that were made against me. Even though I am certain that some board members' coordinator comments and accusations for that meeting, to date the response has been, has not been forthcoming. This appears to be indicative of, "Show me the man and I will show you the crime," or "Rules are for thee, but not for me." Request is respectfully made that the motion to censure be withdrawn and the proposed motion, and then the, and then in any event, the motion to censure be denied.
I'm sorry. Say that again, Pete. I'm Who? When you say you, what do you say? What do you mean? Do you think the president is going to discharge it? Well, Pete, it, it, there's a lot of things. It doesn't say that when you come to a board meeting, you don't kill everybody in the room. I mean, there are certain things that are understood. And one of them is when a committee acts, it acts collectively. He had no authority to make that telephone call, period. There's no, there's no planet on which an individual committee member gets to freelance and do their own thing. Uh, I mean, look, you know, I, I've seen, I've seen these, um, you know, a lot of these things in here where, you know, I, I mean, I have, I, I don't think any, no one else on this committee called a member. John said he was unhappy with the way that, that, the, the, the detail of questions or something. He was unhappy with the process. I never heard that expressed once in a meeting of the committee and you never expressed it to me, John. So now it's convenient for you to say, well, I didn't like the fact we didn't get to ask questions. When did you ever ask the chair to have these questions addressed? When did you ever ask Dave Irwin to ask these questions? You never did. You went and did it on your own. And that's what I think the criticism is. The criticism is you don't get to act individually when you serve on a committee. And you had opportunities, because this was a second callback, you had opportunities if there were further questions, to ask them even after the people were called back. And you never asked to have those questions asked. You just went to the guy and talked to him. And, and that's a potential problem on a lot of fronts. Um, and we've, we've discussed them, I think, but that, that I think is what, is what everyone in this room, with your, with the exception of you, seemed to have an issue with when we first started this discussion. And, and that's why we're here. So Pete, you, you, no, i- i- is everything you, you should do or not do, it's written somewhere, but it may not be written in our policies. We may not have had a formal writing of it. But clearly, we act as a group. We, and, and that's been said, I don't care how many times, probably 40 times since I've been on the board, it's been said that the board acts collectively, the board acts as a group. The board in, board members have no authority to act for the board, to speak for the board, to do anything for the board. And it's the same thing with a committee of the board. You don't have the authority to do that. Well, there is no penalty. What penalty? What, what can you do? You can censure. That's your penalty. I mean, that, if you, if you read the, if you read the thing on censure, uh, the, the bylaw on censure, the board may vote to censure or reprimand a member by two-thirds vote of the membership of the whole board. So you have two choices, reprimand or censure. What does censure mean? Well, it means you're unhappy with, with, with the thing. It, it, censure itself does not carry any, it, it's a toothless penalty. It consists in expressing the view of the board. And that, I think, is, is, is what our bylaw, number 9222, uh, says. Is that those are your two choices when you're unhappy with something. This is not the first time the board has been unhappy during the time I've been on it with the conduct of a member. But I will tell you that that's your method. Your method is censure. Your method is to say, I'm sorry, but this is not, what you did is not right. And we hereby tell you that formally as a group, we hereby tell you that what you did was wrong. That's what censure is. It, it's not some on, onerous penalty, uh, that, that carries with it any, anything. What it is, is it's a, it, it, it's a, it's an expression of a group that says we, we are unhappy with this conduct. That's what it is. And if the group doesn't vote for it, then there is no censure.
Great.
If two-thirds of the people vote for it, then there is a censure. And, and that's what it means. I'm sorry? That's your opinion. Uh, which, you know, if two-thirds of this group disagrees with you, then they'll be censured. Uh, and, and that's, that's what it means. I mean, you may not have an issue with it. Well, that's fine. It's your opinion. I'm sorry. I, I, I've got something else on the screen, Jen. I'm sorry. I lost you there.
That's okay.
I have to find you. I still haven't found you yet. There you are. Go ahead.
I'm hiding. So just, um, two things that I wanted to say was that John, I was also part of the, um, the previous superintendent, um, search. And although the, um, process was different, it was similar. We had a consultant. We did ask the questions, but we were given those questions to ask. So we didn't just off the cuff got to ask whatever questions we wanted. We were given the questions to ask. So it was very, um, structured and we still had a consultant who was the conduit between us and the candidate, and the candidate. So that process was very much the same as this one. And so there was no wiggle room to call a candidate on behalf of yourself or a board. And, and I just have to say, it doesn't really matter if you reach out to a candidate independently and say you're calling on behalf of yourself or the board. Both are inappropriate. They just are. So it doesn't really, that just isn't a point and it doesn't matter. But, and I have for John is, and I just want to stay on point with the, um, phone call. I don't want to get into the weeds with the other, um, issues that you read about, John. But I guess my sense is, is from what you read, that you really do feel even today, that reaching out to that candidate independently was okay. And so I'm going to ask you that question in a simple, you know, do you think that calling the candidate now that you still think it was appropriate for you to do?
Well, Henry, regarding to your comments about the, um, previous superintendent search, what was it? Four years ago or? We were given multiple opportunities to author our own questions and I kind of like that. And, and the candidate got a chance to address each one of us in our own personal questions. For the, this search, in my mind, there were canned questions and the, the answers took up much of the meeting, two hours. And there was nothing, um, that we individually got to address. But, um, would I do it again? Absolutely not. Not.
Do you think what you did was wrong?
You're tonight. I mean, but in my mind, there was nothing stating that I was not allowed to do it. Nothing previously, but tonight in retrospect, you all can say, I, I shouldn't have done it or I, 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 I made a mistake. Yeah, but here it is in black and white. And in the, in, in the previous search that you referred to, any materials that were handed out were either redacted and then collected at the end of the, of the session. These materials were handed out, unredacted, with an invitation to call if we had any further questions. I acted on it. Would I do it again? No.
But do you think what you did was wrong?
Was I wrong?
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, with
Did I feel I was wrong? When I called?
Yeah.
No.
Can, can, can we hold on a second because Jen is saying something and I can't hear what she's saying. John's asking her a question. She's responding and she's, she's muted here.
Thanks. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Now, I just want to know, because I, semantics really, because everybody else seems to have gotten it the last superintendent search and this search, that it isn't appropriate to reach out directly to the candidates. I, I mean, that's just my sense. It's, all of us seem to realize it. And it had been discussed several times. That's why we hired a consultant. So I keep repeating that. But I guess the question is, is you're saying now you realize, looking back, you wouldn't do it again. But you still hold to the fact that what you did was appropriate?
Obviously, I thought it was okay when I did it, yes. But I don't know. I don't even remember, uh, for the, for our first search, um, four years ago. That issue was never addressed then. No one said you couldn't call these people individually then. I'm sorry. And no one said you can't call these, an individ, uh, a candidate now. The only, the only other thing I could add was, all of the other contact information did not include any personal information like that or an invitation to follow up. So this particular person, I did follow up on and I didn't think it was wrong. And I didn't think, um, I wasn't supposed to do that. So here we are.
Do you, do you understand that we're
Well, you can move the question, but you need a vote. Question's been moved. Does anyone want to terminate debate and, and move directly to a vote on the issue of censure right now? If you do, please raise your hand and say aye.
You want to move? You, you asking me, do we want to move right now?
No, I'm asking people if they, you, you've moved the question. I, it's not debatable. So the question is, is it, is it everyone want to stop debate right now and move to an immediate vote on the motion for censure? If you do, please raise your hand and say aye. Those opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Those opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Were you able to count those? Nay, please. All the nays up, please. Hands up. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. All those abstaining, please, so indicate.
Moving the other way.
Well, I saw one vote in favor. I saw nine votes against and one, one member didn't vote. And Jen, I think you voted nay, nay. Am I correct? Yes.
Was this to end discussion?
That's correct.
That was to end discussion, end debate. That motion has failed, so we'll continue debate. Well, I don't know if that's true, Alex. I, i- whether everyone on this board has had, said everything. Well, I, okay, that's your position.
I agree.
Okay, we'll see. All right. I, I just want to, I just have three comments about, in response to John's presentation. Number one, I think I already made this point. He said he was unhappy with the process, but never expressed that unhappiness any member of the committee or to the committee. He talked about a hearing on October twenty-fourth. October twenty-fourth was not a hearing. October twenty-fourth, I had an executive session item scheduled to discuss this. John, you chose to go into public session, which is your right. But don't say that you didn't have notice. If you felt you didn't have notice, the time to have said it was, we need to move this to a different date because I need time to respond. Because I did tell you, as you pointed out before, before we started it, that this was not about the letter to the editor. This was about the contacting of the candidate. And we didn't take any action that night. I specifically decided that I would consult with counsel. And we would put it, because that's what it says in our bylaw, and we would put off the discussion to a future date. When you filed a FOIA request right shortly before the date this was scheduled for, I immediately complied with your request to continue it to tonight. So I don't think there's any sense in which you have not been given an opportunity, uh, to hear about what the issues were. You've had that motion for censure now for a month, uh, or more, and you've known what this is about. The, the and the other thing is you've put a lot of testimony in about the letter. This is not about the letter. It's irrelevant what the letter is. We're not here to talk about the letter. And so I think those are the, the three primary points. There is an issue, though, that you've brought up that I think should have some discussion, which is the issue of who speaks for the board. And you've attached a bunch of, uh, a bunch of things about people writing in, uh, to, or giving testimony. I, I can tell you that you were not on the board at the time when AgScience came up. You were an, you were in the audience opposing it. But the board was in, the, the reason why four members of the board presented testimony to the legislature is because they were specifically requested by the superintendent and the chairman of the board to present testimony. And this testimony in my case was shared with the, was shared with the superintendent and to be distributed to board members prior to it being delivered. You don't have a lot of time on those things, so it was quick. But, um, you know, you have to be at the legislature on a certain day. You don't get a lot of advance notice of when you present your testimony. But in each case, those board members were speaking on behalf of the board with the authority of the chair of the board. This was not something that we freelanced. Also, I'd point out to you in the, in the letter that you attached that I wrote, or the testimony that I wrote, I specifically say in the beginning of that testimony, now I can't find it when you know.
I did note you were the only one who qualified that.
That I, I did say that I'm here to speak on my own behalf. Okay, so I specifically said that, but I, I think that we were, I am here to speak to you on my own behalf and urge you to support this bill. But I think that every member of us had the authority to say, we are here as members of the Board of Education. We have voted in favor of this. We are in support of it. Our board favors this thing and we're here to talk to you about it. We had the authority to do that. So I don't think the, the testimony of, of myself, Ms. Gora, um, Mr. Ramato, and I forgot who the other one was, uh, were, were out of line. You've also cited a, a letter to the editor by Jen Pody, um, also related to the issue of AgScience and it, uh, it, um, I'm sorry, I think this has to do with, I'm sorry, this actually has to do with, uh, with consolidation. I will point out in this letter to the editor, in no place does Mrs. Pody say that she is there on behalf of the board, that she's a member of the board, that she's a board member, uh, or anything like that. She speaks entirely her own opinions. This is a perfectly proper letter to the editor. And I, I think that the, that, that when, when we do speak, if we're speaking on our own behalf, if we are expressing our own opinion, what we say is, I am here expressing my own opinion. Or we simply don't mention that we're members of a board of, that members of the Board of Education or officers of the board. Because once you say that, you give the impression that you're there speaking on behalf of the board. And it can't be done. So the idea is, you can, you can, you can counteract any potential misleading position by saying, I'm here entirely on my own behalf. I'm here to speak for myself, or something to that effect. And, and I think, I think that, that, uh, that Jen, um, does not anywhere in this letter say, um, that she's there on behalf of the board or a member of the board. Now, at the end, it says she's a resident of Washington and a member of the Region Twelve Board of Education. But in my experience, that's put in there by the newspaper. That's not put in there by the person. But I, I think this is, this is, you know, a, um, perfectly proper thing. So I don't think, a- a- and I don't know what this, what this appears to be an advertisement. Vote yes for AgSTEM November tenth. I don't know what this is. I, I could, I don't know that, I don't think this was something the Board of Education put out.
That was something that was attached to your testimony.
Well, I know, but we, we're talking about it because in part, the issue comes up as to how, how, how is it best proper to represent yourself when you're out there? Now, the letter is not in front of us. I'm not here to talk about the letter. But I wanted to take this as an opportunity to, 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 to respond to material submitted in connection with this. I believe this, this, this thing you see that says vote yes came from a, a political action committee that was formed, uh, by, by a number of people in the community in support of AgScience. It did not come from the Board of Education. It came from, it came from individuals, uh, in, in the community. But, but the bottom line is, um, I don't believe that anyone here, um, well, look, I, I, bottom line is, I, I don't believe it was proper to make this contact. And I think you've said you wouldn't do it again if you, you, you had to do it again, uh, if you were in the same position as this. But in any event, that's, that's what I had to say. Does anyone else have anything? John, do you have anything further?
Nothing further. I, I would.
All right. I don't know. What's your pleasure? Do people want to vote on this now? Do you want to vote on it another night? What do you want to do? We've got a motion that's been made and seconded. Are we prepared to vote on it or, or are we not prepared to vote on it? Uh, and the way to say we don't want to vote on it is to make a motion to, uh, postpone consideration to the next meeting. There are motion, most, the motion's been made to postpone consideration to the next meeting. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Uh, are, is there further discussion of this motion?
I'm sorry. I just wasn't sure I heard that. Are we?
She's trying to talk. Can we get her on?
We're postponing this vote until, until the next meeting?
Jen, we, we, we have heard nothing you said, so go ahead. Start over.
Just so I'm clear, the motion was to postpone the vote until next meeting?
Postpone consideration of this matter to the next meeting. That was the motion.
I feel like we've spent a lot of time and energy with this, and we've got other things to do. I think we need to vote now and move on, whatever and however that turns out.
Anyone else have any positions on this they want to discuss? All right. If that's the case, then we'll move to the vote. The vote is to postpone consideration of this issue to the next meeting.
Well, or.
Well, it's got, we, we got to postpone it to the next meeting. If, if the next meeting, you can postpone. The next board meeting, which is on the ninth of January, twenty twenty-three. Yes.
Why would we postpone it? I, I mean, I just feel sort of like what Jen just said. We've had multiple conversations, all, you know, very similar. I, I feel that it's best that we, we vote tonight and not, you know, spend more time, you know, having the same discussion in January. It's, I don't understand.
Well, I, the way I feel is that we've put a lot of effort into discussing the issue. But I think it's good to step back and consider, um, my position, the board member's position. I'm not in a rush to censure someone. I never am. I think it's, I think it's divisive. I don't think John is worth censuring personally. Or any board member. Be quite frank, I wouldn't censure any board member. It would have to be a real, real bad turn for me to censure a board member. I think it's very divisive. And in the end, I don't think it solves anything. What does it solve? What does it really solve? You made a statement of how you feel about how someone conducted themselves, whether they made a mistake inadvertently. I don't know. I, I find it divisive.
May I respond? I, I think the, the issue for me has always been one member of the board acting in a way, you know, acting by themselves. That's the issue. That's the only issue that I see here.
Motion's been made and seconded, postpone consideration of this matter to the meeting of January the ninth, twenty twenty-three. If you are in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
If you are opposed, please raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
If you, if you wish to abstain, please. One extension. Okay, uh, Jen, I think you voted up, you voted nay. Am I correct? Jen?
What?
Did you vote nay?
Yes, I voted nay.
All right, then the vote is, uh, ten votes against. Actually, no, nine votes against, one vote in favor, nine votes against, one abstention and one member not voting. Right? So that's nine, ten, eleven, twelve. That's it. Okay. Okay, so now at this point, is there any further discussion? Otherwise, we'll move to a consideration of the vote for censure.
Greg, may I ask one question of John? John, you, you mentioned that although you, um, stand by and, and I respect that, your position, that at the time you didn't feel that you were doing anything outside of the boundaries of what you were allowed to do, but that you would not do something like that again, correct?
After the course of the last month or two, absolutely. I would never do that again.
And my second question is, being that sometimes the process is the education, um, would you agree that if you wanted to write a letter about any topic that has come before the board, would you agree to run it by the chairman of the board? Even if you're writing as an individual, to just run it by the chairman of the board to make it clear that that letter is in fact coming from the standpoint of an individual? So there is no misinterpretation by anyone?
Can I interrupt before you answer that question, John? I, I, if, if there is no representation that there, that he's acting on behalf of the board, I don't think it's reasonable to ask him to run it by the chairman of the board. The chairman of, you have to understand, you all have a free speech right. And that's the right to speak freely on your own behalf, not on behalf of the board. So I do not want to do anything or consider anything that would remotely interfere with that. I, I, I have stood in favor of your free speech rights in the past, and I'll stand in favor of the free speech rights of everyone in this. So I, I, I can agree with that.
Okay, I, I, I'm just trying to put a safeguard in so John doesn't get jammed up because, in any respect. Because honestly, my position at this point is, I think censure is unnecessary. The education's been had. He understands, whether he agrees or not, he understands that what he did, he couldn't do. Whether he agrees with it or not, I don't think it matters. So I'm comfortable that I don't think this is going to happen again.
Okay, John?
To ram into this point, I don't know why, but I'm not wired like everyone else. I'm sorry. I'm not going to apologize for that, but I will never sign another letter to the editor stating that I am a Region Twelve Board of Education member. I can assure you that.
See, I, I'm not even sure that I agree with that. I think, I think that what you, which you should, if you identify yourself as a member of the board, you should immediately follow it up with the words, however, I am here speaking solely on my own behalf and not on behalf of the board on which I serve. I think as long as you are clear that you are not speaking on behalf of the board, I don't have a problem with someone identifying themselves as a member of the board, as long as they make it clear that they are speaking for themselves only. I think that's the point. Uh, but I don't want to, I don't want to impinge on people's right to speak. That's not what this exercise is about. This exercise is about not having people act unilaterally, um, when they serve on a committee or a board of education. Yeah, John?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
And, and Stephanie also alluded to this the last, uh, go around. Everybody makes mistakes. A lot of mistakes were made. A mistake was made by the Cooperative Extension Services, Educational Services, by not redacting that offered a contact and, and providing the personal contact information. So again, hindsight is twenty twenty. And I have learned by my mistakes. I'm not going to call, I, at the time, I didn't think it was going to be a mistake. But obviously, you people think it is. So I don't.
Well, if, if there is someone who firmly believes that, that censure is not the, the, um, thing we should do, but rather we should reprimand, you can do that too. You, you can say that we disapprove of and of this conduct. You know, you can remove the word censure and replace it with disapprove. But, but otherwise, you know, we're voting on the motion for censure, yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm confused now because I didn't know that there, that hasn't been brought up before.
Yeah, I, I didn't notice it. I, I was reading it tonight. It says, the board may vote to censure or reprimand a board member by a two-thirds vote of the membership.
That's in the same bylaw. So you're saying that those are two separate things, though. That's not one definition of the other. I, I just want to make sure, because if we're going to vote.
Well, let, let me just read the bylaw.
I want to be clear on my voting.
Bylaw, so you understand. Uh, the board, and this is ninety-two, twenty-two. The board may vote to censure or reprimand a member by a two-thirds vote of membership of the whole board. If the board is considering censure, keep in mind that censure has no legal effect and that the legal question regarding the potential violation of an individual's First Amendment rights is still unanswered. The chair should consult with the board's attorney for further advice. Well, I have consulted with the board's attorney, who says that a motion to censure is proper. We didn't discuss the issue of, um, reprimand, but it, but the, the thing does say censure or reprimand. I don't know what the difference is. I'm not, I think it may be a distinct, a difference without a distinction. Okay, because we could, we could look up the definition of censure versus reprimand, but I think that they're basically the same thing. Censure doesn't do anything other than to say, express disapproval. And reprimand does the same thing. It expresses disapproval. But I think those are your choices, censure or reprimand. And I think reprimand, you know, I don't know if you use the word. We hear it by reprimand. I'm not sure that's the right phraseology. Uh, okay, well, I'll tell you what. I, I need a motion to continue the meeting past ten o'clock. I'd like to entertain a motion to continue.
So moved. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. All those opposed, please say nay. All those abstaining, Pete, he votes nay. All those abstaining, Jen votes nay. All those abstaining, please so indicate. We have two nay votes.
Greg, I didn't vote nay.
I'm sorry?
I didn't vote nay.
Jen, were you voting nay or asking a question?
Well, I was asking a question, voted yes. I did not vote yea, nay.
You voted, you voted aye?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So it's 10 votes aye, one vote nay, and one member not voting. So we continue. I'm sorry?
But I do have a question.
You voted to extend? I, I missed the count. I'm sorry. So that's 11 votes in favor, one vote against. So we're going to continue till no later than 10:30.
Greg?
I, I don't know what the difference between censure and reprimand is. I, I, I think it's essentially the same thing. John?
I can't hear him.
Well, when I, when I put in reprimand, I got a definition that says rebuke, especially in official one. So if we, if we check censure.
Greg, can I say something?
Express severe disapproval is what John said, especially in a formal state. So it's a distinction, difference without, it's a difference without a distinction. One of them is, is a formal expression of severe disapproval, and the other one is a rebuke, which suppose we have to look up rebuke. You think you know what something reads? Express sharp disapproval or criticism of someone because of their behavior or actions. So one means severe disapproval, the other one means severe disapproval. They're the same thing, so I don't think there's any difference between, between them. So I, I withdraw the concept that it makes any sense to substitute the word.
Can I say something?
Venture with reprimand. You're, you're at the same place. Yeah, Jen, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just, I wanted to address a few things. First of all, John, we are all wired in very individual ways, right?
Jen, we can't hear you.
We all have.
Your voice is pixelating. The equivalent of pixelating. You, you, you were losing every word just about. You said we're all wired individually.
Right, because I was to really have full, robust conversation, so that we don't agree.
Do you have a better place in your house you can stand?
I don't know. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you, or no?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm right next to my wi. I'm next to my wifi. Well, that was a while ago. I'm gonna try it from my phone. Okay.
That might help. It might be more bandwidth.
I just want the point to be, can you shut off your video? Is this better?
That's better.
Okay. It's not a matter of, because you're wired differently, that we don't want you on the board, or that we don't want you to participate, or that we're against you. This is a matter of trust. So for people who don't know what it's like when you serve on a board, there's 12 of us, we have to be able to trust one another. We're given information in executive session that we're not supposed to share with people. If we can't trust each other, then we can't move and effectively as a board. That's what this is about. It can't trust a board member. That's why we're here. Not because you are wired differently, or because we don't agree, because there needs to be trust. That's the bottom line. And I just feel like that needs to be said, because if we have to not be told information in executive session because one of us can't be trusted with it, that's a problem. And so this is not just because you called somebody that you shouldn't have. It, there's a lot of layers to this that maybe not everybody sees or understands. So to be honest with you, John, you may never do this again, but I don't trust that you won't make another decision that isn't the best in, of us collectively as a board. Because what you think is appropriate, and you might go off and do something different. That's my bigger concern. That's it. People who outside the circle don't understand why we're doing this, to me, the bottom line is trust. Respectfully, John, I don't trust you.
Greg?
Yeah.
What makes you think that I trust her?
Well, yeah, Pete, that, that's fine, but, but, you know, I mean.
I mean, you can make that comment to anybody. I don't trust you. You make decisions. I don't believe it. I don't trust you.
But Pete, it's not a foreign concept that, that when, when we go into executive session, for example, to discuss personnel matters, and a personnel search committee is the ultimate executive session, because number one, it's not subject to FOIA. No one can get the information that the Personnel Search Committee engages in. You can't, you don't even notice, you have to, don't have to notice your meetings. There, there's no right for the public to attend them. A Personnel Search Committee is an executive session on steroids. Okay, and it's absolutely the case that it's important for a board, when it goes into executive session, to be able to speak candidly, and you can't speak candidly if the information in the executive session is leaked. So that's what she's talking about, the trust in, in being able to have a candid discussion in executive session about matters that by law are placed beyond the need of the public to know. Okay, now, all actions have to take place in open session. But executive session is for that. Well, a Personnel Search Committee is the same way. And people have to be able to trust each other to know that information in that group is not going to be let out. Now, the search consultant had everybody sign a confidentiality agreement. Because the search consultant was primarily concerned about having someone identified. These people are applying for a position. They, a lot of them have existing positions, and it, it would be to their detriment if people knew about it. Okay, so that was what the search committee executive was concerned about. Now, John looked at that and said, well, that doesn't mean, can't call candidates. Okay? But I, but I'm just telling you that, that, that what Jen is saying is, is that trust is important in the process. And, and I think she's prob, I think she's right. I, I think that's always been a concern, that people need to trust each other. And I think that the only issues, the only time I think I've ever heard of, of people talk about censure is when that trust has been breached. Okay, so that, that's, I mean, we don't do this very often. It's rare. John?
I'm going to ask both you and Jennifer. How is making a phone call leaking anything from executive session?
No, I'm not.
Revealing anything from executive session? I'm not getting the parallel.
Well, we're not, we're not focused on the issue of what you might have said to him. But what we are focused on is the issue that you communicated with him. And so there's two pieces of this. One of them is
The resume is confidential.
Executive session remains an executive session. And the second piece is, is we don't act individually.
I take offense at you implying that I leak something from executive session.
John, I said what.
Am I supposed to answer?
Well, if no one has any further comments, we're going to proceed to a vote. I started to go there, but people had comments. So is, are we done talking about this? And I don't hear any motions to amend the motion, so we're dealing with the motion on censure as it was drafted. So I'm going to ask everyone who is in favor of the motion to please raise their hand and say aye. Can you make sure that Jennifer is on so I can hear what she says? Okay, all those in favor of the motion for censure, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand and say nay. I see two, three, four. All those who abstain, please so indicate. Okay, so I see seven, the four, the one. That's 12 votes. The motion fails. For lack of a two-thirds vote. Anyone have anything further on this topic, otherwise we'll, we'll, we'll go back to the agenda. And the last thing on the agenda is whether or not we adjourn. No. If no one objects, we'll adjourn by consent at 10:19. So we made it under the 10:30. Thank you all very much.